Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
We will now have a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 7, 2021, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We, uh, the city of Asbury Park has a proclamation declaring March 24th as Education and Sharing Day. We will now move on to items to be presented. The item to be presented, we have the reopen Asbury Park presentation, and that's going to be held by Michael Manzella, the deputy city manager.
Thanks, Melody, and actually, I'm gonna pass it off to, um, James Banano, our new transportation manager, to take, that's okay, to take, uh, to give the presentation, but I'm, I'm here to support if we have any, uh, any questions, but let me, oh, go ahead.
Well, Mike, the only thing I was gonna say is, and just let James do like two minutes on who, who we, you know, just for people who don't know who he is, where he came from, you know, for people who aren't aware of, of the new hire, newish.
Sure. Go, go ahead and, um, let me just get him unmuted here. All right, I can't get James unmuted, so I guess I'll just, uh, it's not unmuting him. So I guess I'll just, uh, start, and if I can get him unmuted, he'll, he'll jump in. Um, but, thank you, everyone. So, um, as everyone's aware, we had, we launched the reopen Asbury Park plan, um, last June in, uh, in response to the pandemic and our ability to kind of reuse public space to, to support business recovery. Um, here are just some images from the, the program that we ran. Last year, uh, was very successful in terms of getting businesses able to expand their space outdoors where it was safer, um, when indoor capacity was significantly limited. Um, we did survey the, the, the businesses, uh, twice, actually, throughout the program, and overall, I think, in general, a majority of businesses had a positive impact, uh, related to the reopen program. Um, sixty-three percent of the recipients responded that the street closures had positive impact on their revenue. Um, a majority felt that the street closure increased the foot traffic, um, and made the downtown more of a destination, uh, and most were in favor of extending the closures through the end of November last year, which we did, and then, um, into next year, we've already heard a lot of, um, businesses really looking forward to having that extra space available for dining and retail. Um, the governor has, as you all know, uh, increased indoor capacity, and actually, just today, he announced it's gonna go up to fifty percent, but it's still not a hundred percent. Um, the, uh, businesses are not allowed to have indoor bar seating at this time still, and, um, there's actually a bill passed by the state legislature and signed by the governor which extended the expanded alcohol licenses through October of 2022. Um, so initially, they were only through November of 2020, and they were expanded through 2022 with the, with the, you know, the state, I think, recognizes that businesses are gonna need some time to recover, um, all of the revenue that they lost last year in order to stay afloat. Um, so what we're looking to do is propose to expand the outdoor capacity, um, you know, through that date, obviously, we will evaluate, um, as time goes on, whether, you know, it needs to stay in place, but, um, you know, right now, the state is allowing those expanded permits through 2022, so that's what we're looking at. Um, and again, it would be expanded use of sidewalks, public streets, and any business that has private property that is available for outdoor dining. Um, and of course, this is the-
Hey, Mike, this is James.
Oh, there you go.
I can take over for Yvonne. I'm sorry, yeah, I apologize. I don't know why star six didn't seem to work, but, um, I could pick up for everyone here if you'd like.
Go ahead, James, and just, just give a quick little intro of yourself, too.
Oh, sure, sure. So, I'm very sorry. Uh, I'm James Banano. Um, I have worked for the last five years for the county, Monmouth County, as their transportation planner for the planning department. Uh, before that, I attended Rutgers, uh, Blaustein School for City Planning for my master's degree, and I, Westchester University for my undergraduate in urban planning. I have worked for, uh, the Voorhees Transportation Center at Rutgers, as well as Easy Ride here in Monmouth, our local transportation management association. Uh, I'm very familiar with Asbury Park, I've lived here for the last five years, and I'm really excited to get working as Asbury Park's new transportation, uh, manager. Uh, that being said, I'll be just jump right in here and try and pick up so we don't lose too much time. Um, so, uh, the areas we are looking to use for our, our pedestrian mall are going to be the 500 block of Cookman from Bangs Avenue to Emory, Cookman Avenue from Emory Street to Bond, and then, once again, Cookman from Bond to Main Street. Those three sections will have, the intersections will be open to allow traffic to pass through, but the, uh, actual spots on Cookman will be closed, similar to last year. We are also going to close, uh, half of Madison, uh, partly in front of, um, the, on the south side in front of the businesses towards the west side of, of the street, and on the east side, on the, on the north side, uh, by those businesses. That way, we can get as many people out to the street and, you know, help everyone out as best as possible. Uh, I think, Mike, you can go to the next slide. So we are organizing the, the, the space a tiny bit differently this year. Uh, last year, we had a twenty-foot pedestrian access walkway in the center of the road, and we had the restaurants and businesses use the rest of the road, uh, um, road and sidewalk for their businesses. Seeing as the, uh, you know, we have reached thirty-five percent capacity inside and possibly more by the time this all opens up, we decided to leave a five-foot pedestrian walkway on the sidewalks. Um, they, you know, the sidewalks on Cookman are about fifteen feet wide, so five feet will be dedicated to pedestrians. Must be clear of all, um, you know, signage or host stations or anything, um, strictly for pedestrians. The rest of the space can be used by the businesses as they see fit, along with the space in the street as well. We are going to remove some of the larger yellow and orange, uh, you know, barriers we had last year for something more, more palatable. Uh, we have purchasing planters where we will be able to place on the left and right side of the road. The picture you're looking at is, isn't to scale, but it's the best we can come up with in the short time we had. We are looking to put these planters, um, more towards the parking lanes, and then in the center of the road have our yellow, uh, car stopping, like traps. Uh, that way, we have, will have no chance of a car getting in. Planters are very heavy and concrete, and those, uh, clam traps, or whatever we want to call them, uh, will definitely stop a car of, of, a large car moving quickly if anything goes wrong. Uh, so, we are looking to begin the closure around April 30th and continue it through November 29th. Uh, the 500 block of Cookman, so the area between Bangs and Emory, we are looking to close twenty-four seven, uh, for the whole season, no cars at any time, while the 600 and 700 blocks, so from Emory to Bond and Bond to Main Street, will be closed from Fridays about 1:00 PM to Mondays at 7:00 AM. That way, they'll have the weekends closed and the weekdays open for, uh, that'll be for traffic, for everything else, for parking, completely open. Again, the five foot, uh, feet on sidewalks, as well as twenty-foot axing, axing in the middle of the road, those will be basically for all of our pedestrians and our, and our, uh, emergency vehicle access if need be. Those should be clear at all times of any, uh, planters, sandwich boards, or host stations, or anything else for the businesses. Those are strictly for access. We are continuing the no seating after 10:00 BM rule that we did last year. This is for, uh, you know, to be considerate to the, the residents along Cookman Avenue and keeping noise down. And we are also continuing that alcohol beverages can only be sold, uh, within the seated tables of the restaurant. There will be no alcohol beverages roaming around the streets during this time. The city also, we're gonna actually have, uh, you know, we'll always be watching this situation and always be looking at Cookman Avenue and the closures. We'll be reevaluating our strategy. Uh, we have the, uh, you know, we reserve the right to change how it's working just so that we can keep up with any needs or demands or changing circumstances as they go along. Uh, Mike, you go to the next one. We're gonna keep the same strategy that last year, where any amenities that are put out by restaurants are the restaurants', or, you know, or businesses, retail businesses, are their responsibility. The city will be responsible for the planters and the road blocking, and the rest will be up to the businesses. We do require ADA ramps, uh, at each business. We have to make sure people can get onto the sidewalks, we don't want to trap people on the street. We are continuing the use of umbrellas, uh, for shade covering, but we aren't using any other things, any kind of canopies or anything this summer, or tents or like that. Obviously, no open flames, gas-powered devices, and food storage. This isn't, uh, you know, we're not trying to have any food trucks or any, uh, you know, cooking out on the street of any kind, something like that. We are going to install some, or implement some loading zones. These are for pickups, drop-offs, as well as actually delivering things to the businesses themselves. This is gonna be, uh, you know, probably more active on the weekends than during the week, as a lot of Cookman will be open during the week and allow them. We have designated these blue areas, so we have three around the intersection of, of Bond and Cookman. Uh, these will be, you know, mostly fifteen-minute-ish area spots to allow for a quick pickup and drop-offs of food, whether it be for a grub hub or just picking up people, I know, in their cars, as well as two along Emory, um, and one at Bangs and Cookman at the end. So the expanded dining across the boardwalk is going to remain the same cafe, uh, the, we're gonna resume the cafe license spaces along the boardwalk. Uh, we're not expanding them, uh, same what we did last year, we're, we're gonna keep them where they are. Uh, the rooftop opening dining is permitted throughout the city, and the other areas are allowed to access, you know, off-street parking areas, as long as it's, you know, in their own parking lots or permitted through the business next door, um, with written permission, which is, yeah, the same style here. So, yes, so if you want to expand to the business next to you or, or to a parking lot, we just require the written permission from that property owner that you, they are allowing you to use this space. So, for our submittals, we are requiring some, some, some documents from, from residents that, uh, you know, to keep everything on a level and organized and, and not overgrowing. Um, we, we do require a description of items to be placed in the public right-of-way, we wanna know tables, chairs, or display racks of any kind. We would like a schematic diagram that includes exact dimensions of the space requested. We are, as of right now, continuing the six-foot dining table spacing. Um, things can change by the summer, but we, as of right now, the, uh, executive order stands, and we are continuing to use six-foot spacing. We will require a certificate of insurance, as well as a security plan, litter control plan, and hold harmless agreement. Uh, of course, all applicants must have a paid birth and title license and their COVID-19 expansion of, uh, premises permit, which I believe is already extended from last year. We are, uh, changing this year, we're going to include, um, events in the space, so there were some spaces that weren't really occupied by businesses last year, and we'd like to have a draw there, so we are including, uh, maybe some, um, small music events, a lot of public art is encouraged, mostly between the hours of 3:00, 9:00, 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM, as far as music is concerned or activities. Uh, public art can remain in the space until the road opens up again, and then we, we suggested move out of the way and kept somewhere else. Uh, we're also going to try and use unused space, make it available to other Asbury Park based businesses upon request. If a business has, you know, written permission from one of the Cookman, uh, you know, locations that they can set up a small stand or table in front of their business, we're going to work with them to allow them and, uh, get out there and sell some product of, of anything they, I know, have or like to sell. Uh, yes, yes, they need written permission. So, all of these, um, you know, these documents we posted, this webpage, we have, haven't updated quite yet, this is the same location that they were available last year. There is information about the, uh, you know, road opening or closing, uh, right now on there, but we will update the documents to allow everyone to submit. And I would just like to say, um, cafe licenses, uh, fees for cafe licenses, I, sorry, I missed this one point before, but for the cafe licenses, as they've been extended, they'll be, uh, the fees are still due on August 1st as they normally are. But, thank you, uh, that is all I have for, for now.
Thanks, James. Is there any questions for the council, comments?
Yes, uh, Mike, um, did you mention, I might have missed it, but did you mention the time on the garbage pickup? Is that gonna be still in the places where they could pick up the garbage? Still gonna be the same as last year?
Yeah, Jesse, so, um, for, for the downtown, uh, garbage pickup is during the summer, Monday, Tuesday, Friday, so that will continue, um, as most of Cookman will be open. I think we will have to work with the 500 block of Cookman to make sure that garbage is placed in, in an appropriate place where, um, it can be picked up, but we didn't really have any issues with that last year, so, um, in terms of the, the garbage pickup, so.
Okay, thank you.
One comment and one question. I love the fact that you now have made, um, pedestrian access available on the sidewalks. I know last year, some of the businesses were concerned that with people walking just down the middle of the street, they didn't get the window shoppers, and therefore, um, the visitors to their stores that they normally wouldn't have, so I think that's a great change. Um, when we say last seating at 10 o'clock, does that mean that, um, people can be seated up until 10 o'clock? And then there's, maybe they're there till 11 o'clock? Think it was on the clock?
No, I think the-
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mike. Okay, um, I think we're gonna continue with the, um, last seatings to be around like 8:45 or 9:00. I don't think we should be telling businesses what, when they should be seating, but we should definitely tell them when they can stop, uh, having people outside, which is 10:00 PM. We think all tables should be empty at 10:00 PM.
So, maybe we should change that language, instead of saying no seating after 10:00 to, um, you know, reflect that there's a curfew upon, upon outdoor diners at 10:00.
Certainly, certainly.
That's it, great job, thank you.
Is there any more questions?
No, I'm also gonna say, Mike and, and James, I think you took like a lot of, you know, last year, um, you took a lot of, you know, some suggestions and complaints and really worked together a plan trying to, look, you're not gonna make everybody happy, there's no question about it, and there's some businesses who don't want any of the streets closed down, and some businesses who want all the streets closed down. And I really think you married together a, um, a plan, taking, you know, all of those concerns into effect and coming up with this, so kudos, kudos to you both.
Yeah, and I think the important thing that's, thanks, Amy, I think the important thing to stress is that, you know, the city can continue to adapt and change if, if we find that conditions change, right, so.
Not hearing any other questions, shall we move on?
Yes, I do.
Okay, we will now move on to matters from city council.
Okay, hello, everyone. So first, I'd just like to acknowledge that, um, 2021 is the anniversary of the founding of Asbury Park. Asbury Park was founded in 1871. This is the 150th anniversary, and I know that the Asbury Park Historical Society and some other organizations are planning some forms of celebration, so I just ask that you keep your eyes and ears open for that. Um, the city of Asbury Park is also hiring for the summer 2021. Open seasonal positions are available as public works laborers, boardwalk, restroom attendants, beach gate, gate guards, cashiers, beach monitors, lifeguards, EMTs. And for details, you can go to thecityofasburypark.com/jobs, or you can call 732-502-5715. And I just wanna let folks know that, you know, there are people that are still having trouble registering for, uh, COVID vaccinations. We do have, uh, vaccination assistant line. If you're an Asbury Park resident and currently eligible to receive a vaccination, you can call 732-775-0960, and the staff will help register you with a local healthcare provider to be added to their waitlist. They've been very helpful, and they've done a tremendous job. And, uh, that's it for me, thank you.
Councilmember Clayton.
Hi, um, just to continue about the vaccines, we also want to announce that the city, in partnership with the county and Second Baptist Church, now has a second location where you will be able to get the vaccinations. Um, the, the next, they're by appointment only, and, and they will be on Saturdays, and it's starting Saturday, March 13th, and it's from 2:00 to 4:00. The, and the next appointment will be Saturday, March 27th, and to book an appointment, call And that's it for me.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes, I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Nope, I have nothing.
Mayor Moore.
Uh, yes, uh, excuse me. Uh, thank you, Yvonne, for spreading that good news, and it's great news, and I can never thank the county, uh, commissioner, uh, the director, Arneone, and deputy director, uh, Kylie, and, uh, Chris Merkel, and the nurses and everybody, and we will all be there, I know Yvonne and I are gonna be there, working on Saturday, um, it's great news, we're starting off with a hundred doses, because that's all we can get, but we're looking to up that in the future. And another thing, just a general comment, like, uh, if anybody ever sees anything wrong in Asbury Park, which a lot of people email me, how about this, how about that? I totally agree, and I'll pass it on, but you don't have to wait for a council meeting, we have this great website where you can just go onto the, onto it, and logic complaint is looked into, it's taken care of, uh, as soon as possible. So again, um, that's it, thank you.
Okay, we are on to matters from the city manager.
I have nothing, Melody, thank you.
Matters from the city attorney.
I have nothing at this time, Melody, thank you.
Okay, we are on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move to open?
Second.
In favor?
Hi.
All right.
Members of the public may participate by using the rain, raise hand function in the meeting, or by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. I will give you a warning when you have one minute remaining. I am calling upon Polly. Polly, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, am I unmuted?
Yes, Polly, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, wow, I'm first. Uh, Polly Shilga, 1105th Avenue. Um, first of all, I, Michael and I had our shots, our, our, uh, vaccines on, uh, Friday, and I just wanna say thank you to the city of Asbury Park and Social Services for the immediate callback I had after I was on every single list. Um, Michael and I had our, our injections, our vaccines, and the, the atmosphere there in the senior center was so positive, everybody was upbeat, it was efficient, it was amazing. So, Asbury Park taking care of its own, so, um, thanks for that. And, um, Mike and James, presentation, um, thank you again for all the hard work you've been doing. This is all such a huge adjustment, and Asbury Park does, um, does pivot, you know, and, and we are, uh, what I've seen in, in with Asbury Park Complete Streets Coalition, the, the, the always willing, um, council that will change, uh, opinions and, and be open. And, uh, speaking of open, the, the open streets plan, Asbury Park reopen, um, I'd like to just point out that it's not a closed street, and I think that's important to, um, to define, and, and that we use language to, to clarify that it's an open street for people and not closed to cars, um, even though we are not welcoming vehicles, um, people driving, our guests in the city, and people walking and riding bikes, um, should be able to be, um, safe and, and enjoy, uh, going to the businesses. I love the idea, Eileen, you mentioned the window shopping, and that's really important, that people are gonna be able to walk right along the, um, the front of the, the storefronts. Um, uh, I, I had so many notes. Um, Pete Buttigieg is the US DOT Secretary of Transportation, and you, some of you-
One minute remaining.
Some of you may know, he's a big proponent of Vision Zero, which is, um, no, uh, traffic crash fatalities, zero crash fatalities, and there's a national complete streets bill, uh, that's being promoted right now, and I'm, I'm putting it out on apcompletestreets.org. Um, walkable, bikeable cities all over the US are being promoted, and so we are not alone. Asbury Park is perfectly situated and designed to be a walkable and bikeable city, and we can do this. The logistics are huge, it's a big adjustment for people to understand, um, how it can work, um, but we have to just go forward and, and, and do this, and believe that it will work. Um, so, um, thanks again for everybody, the, um, please take a look at apcompletestreets.org, I try to pop in, information up on Facebook, and, um, if you wanna be on our website and, and subscribe, you'll get more information, but, um, we're behind everything that, that the-
Time's up.
Okay, uh, thank you, Polly, and I feel terrible, I didn't say before, and you remind me, I, I can never thank, uh, Doug Schultz and his department for doing a great job, I can never thank Donna for, uh, knowing how sincere the council felt as far as like getting more vaccines to the city as soon as possible, where we hired another staff member, so we were basically up and running twenty-four seven, and probably the only city in, oh, Monmouth County, if not New Jersey, that did that, so I, I think we've been ahead of the curve, and, uh, again, Doug and Social Services have been doing a great job, and, uh, I'm happy you got your shots in Asbury. Vera and I had to go to way up north Jersey, but again, it was well worth the trip, and thank you.
I am calling upon Pam Lamberton. Pam, please state your name and address for the record.
Pam Lamberton, Sunset Avenue, Asbury Park. Um, I would like to know the status of a couple of projects going on in the city. I know you've been concentrating, the council and Donna and Mike, on getting us through this COVID pandemic, but there are a couple of things I don't wanna fall in the track, cracks, so I was wondering if you could tell us, uh, the status of the parking garage, the status of Bradley Cove, and the status of Green Acres property, and have we ever been able to settle that Green Acres issue with the state? Uh, and I'd also like to know who in the city is the authority on the waterfront redevelopment plan? Uh, I have a couple of, uh, questions about that, and I wanted to know who to talk to. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Pam. Hopefully Pam can reply. I, I don't understand your last question, what do you mean, who has status as far as questions? Can you be more explicit? Can you open up Pam again?
Pam, are you able to reply?
Mayor, I can reach out to her and get clarification on that.
Are you back on?
Uh, I think I'm on.
Okay, um-
Yeah. Um, uh, the very last issue that I mentioned was, uh, who in the city is the authority on the waterfront redevelopment plan? I have a cou- couple of questions about it, I didn't wanna hold up the meeting tonight, I just wanted to know who I could talk to about the waterfront redevelopment plan.
Okay, Donna will get in touch with you as far as that. As far as the parking garage, that's been put on hold just because of, uh, lack of income from the transportation authority at this point in time, uh, and then Bradley Cove, and then the next question as far as Green Acres, I'll turn it over to Donna.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Pam, you can reach out to me regarding questions on the redevelopment plan. What I can't answer, I can talk to our attorney about, excuse me, sorry, um, regarding Bradley Cove and Green Acres, we have confirmed with Green Acres that the million-plus dollars is still available for acquisition, so that has not gone away, that is still available. Uh, regarding the, the Bradley Cove property, um, the council will need to, um, review, um, some documents regarding the appraisal that was done, and then the council will then move to make a decision on what the next steps are, so that will be, um, in upcoming executive session. Excuse me. Um, I think that answers her questions.
Okay, I am-
Thank you.
Calling upon Tracy Rogers. Tracy Rogers, please state your name and address for the record. Tracy, star six to unmute yourself. All right, I'm gonna, um, I'll go back to Tracy, I'll move on to someone else. Uh, Felicia Simmons, please state your name and address for the record, and Felicia, star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, hello, good evening. Felicia Simmons, Central North School Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Um, I'm calling in to say, um, thank you for the COVID testing and all the great work that, um, the city is doing on that behalf, and also just to say that there is a, um, a, a, a complimentary, um, um, events going on, which will be staggered every two weeks, which is- which is, um, COVID testing, education, registration, information on, um, Medicaid and meal delivery. And eventually we have a partnership with Meridian and also with Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield and that Black Women Physician, New Jersey Black Women Physician facility. So after you register with us, you'll be able to get your vaccination in Meridian, which they'll be making special places for, um, the residents at the clinic on the corner of, on the corner of thirty-five and Springwood in Neptune. And I just again want to say thank you. The first will be on the fourteenth, but not to make sure that we don't conflict with, um, with, um, second Baptist, um, great one shot. You can come in and drive through. There'll be two sites, one in Neptune at the Housing Authority and Thirty Ridge Court. And then the other will be at Saint Augustine Church. It will be a drive-through facility. You have the rapid testing. So you'll have your results in fifteen minutes. Um, and follow up again with all the education and other, you know, things to make sure on health and otherwise. And again, I would like to thank you to the city for your response to this pandemic and have a great evening.
O- okay, don't cut Felicia off for a second. Uh, thank you, Felicia, and I thank you for thanking us. But, uh, do you have like, uh, an email address or a phone number as far as your event? So we can, please, if you have it, put it out there so the public can hear it.
Um, yes, um, you can contact me directly at, um, F or A P at gmail dot com. You can contact Black Women, um, P, um, Black Women, New Jersey Black Women Physicians at, um, um, N P, N J P dot B R U G dot W B G. I'll, I'll send it all to the city, but it's, it's a great partnership with the city, the county, Department of Health and Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield and other local, um, people in the city. And I would just love for everybody to be part to make sure that we still stay a healthy and active city. Uh, I'll send the information. There is a flyer, um, that I can send in. Um, again, it will be staggered every two weeks. So it will be, um, the fourteenth, the next will be the twenty-eighth. The next will be two weeks after that and next will be two weeks after that. So eventually come April first, partnered with, um, Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield, there'll be a task force. The task force will be there educating and testing, but there'll also be, um, access to, um, the vaccine also, the Moderna, um, two-shot vaccine. Um, and Meridian, the partnership with Meridian. Um, as soon as you register, people say if you register, uh, which is our soft opening, um, on the fourteenth Sunday. Um, after you register, um, they take our list and they will be calling and scheduled your appointments to come in, um, um, through the Meridian system. So then thank you. I'll send the flyers. I have your email, John, and I'll send it right to you. Again, thank you, city, for all the great work. And together we're going to make sure that our community, um, is taken care of.
Okay, again, thank you and, uh, we'll get that information out. Okay, next.
Um, Tracy Rogers. Tracy, I'm coming back to you. Star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, uh, thank you. Uh, right now I want to, uh, first, uh, thank the mayor. I, you know, and, and people say I beat up on people, but I, I try to, I give credit where credit is due. And, and if something else is wrong, I'm gonna tell you the other, the opposite. Uh, I called the mayor and I was, I, I said, I, I believe a lot of our residents weren't being, uh, uh, inoculated with the vaccine. And I thought that was very, uh, I was unhappy about that. And the mayor reached immediately reached out to the county. So I want people to know that, that he immediately reached out to the county and started on working on that plan. And I want to congratulate him. Uh, he looked good at that podium up there. But, uh, I want to, I want to thank him for, uh, realizing that, uh, leadership counts and, and getting something done to reach out to the, uh, community in his time. Uh, and, and I just, I just want to say I appreciate, uh, to be able to call him and, and, and tell him when, when it's pleased that he reacts. Um, on to my unsad note. I, I want to address some things because we're going to be talking about this rent control bill. And people called me out saying, did I not want to meet with the owners or property owners? And I did talk to their attorney. And I made it clear that we were only interested in a conversation that would be addressed with the city and the property owners and ourselves. And the property owners were not interested in meeting with the city and wanted to meet with us alone. And I just was not, not happy with that situation because the city has to be involved because they're going to manage anything of agreement between two parties. And this is an ordinance that has to be managed and going through. So when people, uh, want to take these, uh, uh, letters and, and newspapers, they keep on saying people don't want to. No, people are upset and they have some issues. And, uh, we have to realize that there's some very vulnerable people in this community. And a community group came together and saw it was an issue that was not being addressed. And we stepped up to address it. Now I want to thank everybody in my group that, that took that opportunity, the people that went out to go get those signatures and to work along to, to try to protect people from being pushed out. And, uh, a lot of other comments will be made tonight that may not, people may not like, but I will be telling the truth about this whole process, what's going on and the vulnerability of our people. So thank you, uh, until, uh, later in this, uh, program.
Thank you, Tracy.
Okay, uh, thank you, Tracy. Uh, you're right, leadership counts. And leadership sometimes, most times comes from public input. And yes, you and I had that conversation. I deeply appreciate it. And, uh, I thank you for the clarification you just gave. And, uh, again, a lot of people think, geez, Tracy and John fight a lot. Tracy and John fight a lot. We disagree on a lot of items. We disagree. We agree on most items. And my phone is open to anybody and everybody and Tracy will attest to that and say, you know, hey, more isn't much of an ogre's people think and he's open for ideas. And again, Tracy, thank you.
I am calling upon Sylvia. Sylvia, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Sylvia Sylvia, two hundred Lincoln Drive Ocean. I work for the Asbury Chamber of Commerce. Um, had a couple of things, um, hope everybody's doing well. First, um, Mike and James, uh, thank you so much for that presentation. Um, James, you've really hit the ground running. Um, I, uh, I think that your plan addresses a lot of the issues that we, um, were hearing last year, particularly with the, um, the space, um, for pedestrians on the sidewalks. Um, and I, I think, um, Eileen or Amy mentioned earlier, um, you know, that allows for the window shopping and that, that was, that's a big issue, particularly for our retailers, um, who felt some, some of which who felt that they were being blocked by tables. But, um, I think those big flower pots are going to make things look so much more appealing. And the special event space is a really nice extra touch as well. Um, if you have anything that you'd like me to circulate, please let me know. Um, and I'm, I was thinking maybe I can even take the clip of this meeting from your presentation and send it to our business community, um, in addition to the emails I know that you already send out. Um, I, uh, wanted to also thank you, Eileen, for mentioning the hundred and fiftieth anniversary. I think that's absolutely amazing. Um, and maybe I can even get, uh, a page on our website for anybody that might be doing anything for the end of anniversary. Um, lastly, I also wanted to thank, um, our council, uh, for being so proactive from the very beginning, uh, including taking restrictive actions two days before the state. I think the things that you have done and the leadership that you've shown have saved many lives and are continuing to do so with the actions that you've taken now with the, um, vaccine program. So thank you and I hope everybody stays-
One minute remaining.
Healthy, happy, hopeful, and hopefully twenty twenty-one will make twenty twenty be ashamed of itself and happy that it's over. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Sylvia, and, uh, thanks for the kind words and it, it was a great presentation. The only thing I was thinking, again, I'm saying this tongue in cheek, as long as we don't break those big flower pots moving them, I'll be happy. Because they ain't cheap and, uh, I don't know how we're gonna pick them up with forklifts and put them in and out, but I'm sure Mike and James have that under control. So again, thank you.
Calling upon five one two four, five one two four. Please state your name and address for the record. And star six to unmute yourself. Rita, five, star six to unmute yourself.
Somebody interrupted you, Melanie. This is Rita Moreno.
Hi, Rita.
I'm sorry. If somebody was, whoever that person is that answers. Uh, anyway, uh, this is Rita Moreno from Eighth Avenue. I happened to review the bill resolution today. And I, I can't believe that we have all these consultants. I, I, I just can't believe how many people we, we have another payroll on the bill resolution, other than our regular payroll. I think you better look at this again. We have lots of lawyers for advice, revenue people for finance, and, uh, the television. I, I didn't know we paid dues to the people on, uh, A P T V, two hundred and fifty dollar dues. That bill is eleven thousand dollars this week. I didn't even know it would cost us that much to have, uh, TV. I know Jerry always wanted it and we got it and it's very nice, but it's getting to be very costly too. And, and there's just so many bills on here. I can't believe it. And, uh, those planters too, they're on here, but I forgot the cost. Now I know the answer to that. They're going to be put on Cookman Avenue. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk about was that ninety-two thousand dollar bill and it's a transportation center. And John, you just said that, that's at a standstill, right? The ninety-two thousand dollars, that bill there in the bill resolution? I was just wondering about that. And the other thing I wanted to say, has anybody seen Moonstruck lately? Pretty soon we won't be able to see Moonstruck, one of the best restaurants in town. There's, you can't even put a tissue paper between those two buildings. That's a disgrace what happened there. The zoning and planning board, I don't know who decided that, but we have a beautiful restaurant there, Moonstruck, very good food.
One minute remaining.
Brings all these people that come to Asbury and they're consistent in their food too. And you had to put a building like that right next to it? What's going on around here? I think the green team better look at how these buildings are going up because they do affect the environment. Everybody talks about the building on a beachfront shading the beach. And I think the green team better get involved with that. And I, 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 I don't know, John, did you see that building? Amy? Amy, you better look at bill number forty-four, fifty-four because you have a little child. It's, I guess your son is five years old now. You better look at that bill and read it carefully because it affects your son. I think he's about five. It affects children from five to high school. You better look at it. It's not a good bill for parents. And that's all I have to-
Are you talking about an Asbury? Oh, you're talk, I, I don't know what you're talking about, Rita. Are you talking about an Asbury bill or are you talking about a state of New Jersey bill?
Yes. I'm in a meeting. Hotel.
Also Jesse, you gotta, Jesse, you gotta mute yourself, I think.
I, I believe she's talking about a federal bill.
Okay. Have we, I thought she was talking about the A P T V bill. That's why I got a, I got confused there for a minute. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
My five-year-old's not on A P T V, Rita. Okay.
Thank, uh, okay, thank you, Rita. Uh, you know, I go through the bills and claims every two weeks and I ask Joanne, ask, uh, Donna questions. Uh, I, I can't answer these questions now, but you, you, you got my phone number. Please call me like a couple of days before, call Joanne, call Donna, and we'll get you the answers. And again, this is what I'm going back to. If you see something wrong, you think something wrong, don't wait two weeks for a council meeting. Call us up right away and we'll get the answer within twenty-four hours. Okay, stay safe, Rita.
Okay, I'm calling upon Maureen Nevin. Maureen Nevin, please state your name and address for the record. And star six to unmute yourself, Maureen.
Okay, I think I'm unmute, unmuted now.
Yes, you are.
Okay, great. Um, it's Maureen Nevin, uh, Deer Lake Court. Uh, let's see, I, I, um, I had a question, uh, for the mayor about the, uh, about the budget. Jesse, you have to get that looked at. Making me nervous now. Um, yeah, I want, I, I want to ask, why does the mayor abstain, uh, from voting, um, on the city budgets? Um, and also I want to thank everyone responsible for the COVID vaccine injection at the senior center on Springwood Avenue, March fourth. I had my shot, my first shot. Um, the staff and volunteers were great, very considerate and calming and perfectly organized. Thank you, thank you. Um, I want to, uh, you know, I still, okay, I have, I have my own question, but I want to ask about Pam Lamberton's question because I did not understand the answers. And the purpose of this is not just for the person who's answering the question. It's, it's an open meeting. It's a public meeting so that the public can, uh, listen to the questions that are raised and understand the answers. Um, so why don't we have recycling for codes above one through three? We used to have one through six, I thought. Um, I thought I saw that on the previous calendar and they have missed, uh, a memo on this. Um, so if you could explain that. Um, the questions that Pam Lamberton had as far as the Green Acres and the, um, the Bradley Cove plan, if you could, uh, give us a, it was kind of like listening to a conversation that was already, you know, going when you, when you entered the room and you didn't quite, um, explain-
One minute remaining.
The framework. Thank you. The framework for that question. Um, and okay, I think that's all for now. Thank you.
Okay, Maureen, it's John Moore. Uh, the recycling, one, two, three is a question I'm going to pass on to Donna. Uh, I know what you're talking about because you turn a bottle upside down or plastic can upside down and they take some, they don't take some other. And again, I think it's state law about let Donna answer that. As far as the Pam's question, as far as Bradley Cove, I thought Donna answered that. Uh, Bradley Cove will be discussed, uh, upcoming, um, closed exec, the Green Acres money is still there as far as acquisitions only. As far as John Moore abstaining and voting on the city budget, totally false. I've never abstained on the city budget. Thank you. Donna?
Uh, so Maureen, I didn't quite understand your question regarding the recycling. If you could either call or email me tomorrow and let me know what you're looking to do, I'll get you an answer. Thank you.
Donna, I, I think she was looking for like, why we in the other cities only take certain types of plastics? And that's where the numbers one, two, three and then above. And I, I think that's, I, I could be totally wrong. I think that's state law and what the recycling centers will accept.
Yeah, you're correct.
That was your, that was your question.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll put that information up on the website so everyone can understand what the restrictions are. That's a good idea. I got it now.
Right, right. And Maureen, if that wasn't your question, shoot down an email tomorrow and fix it. Thank you.
I am calling upon, uh, nine seven zero zero, nine seven zero zero. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, everybody. It's Peter Seagull, Seventh Avenue. And, uh, I wanted to start off by saying that the reopen plan that was discussed at the first part of this presentation tonight, it was very great to see, so positive to see that so much thought is going into that kind of thing. Uh, I'm sure everyone's excited for everything about the town and, and elsewhere, uh, to reopen. Um, and, and try to get back to some sort of sense of normal, whatever that may mean. But, uh, just great to see all that thought and work that went into that. And, uh, you know, spring, spring's here. We're coming up on summer, so it's on everyone's mind. And, uh, looking good, so I'm excited for that. I also wanted to mention, and I can't remember if this was discussed- And, uh, looking good, so I'm excited for that. I also wanted to mention, and I can't remember if this was discussed the last meeting or not, but the Asbury Park Dinner Table, which is a local grassroots organization that was formed to help restaurants and people in need of meals when the pandemic started, received a very, very large grant, over a hundred thousand dollars. It's amazing. I haven't heard anybody talk about it and I, I just wanted to mention it because maybe there's some people here on the call tonight that can talk about it. But I got an email about it. My company was very proud to be one of the earlier partners and contributors to the Asbury Park Dinner Table. And so to see the progress that it's made and, and the sheer numbers of businesses and people that it helped, it's just awesome. And I think Joe Grillo's on this call, so maybe Joe can chime in now or later and just tell us more about it. But it was a ton of money and it was awesome. And, uh, so, uh, that's really it. I'm, I'm, uh, looking forward also to speaking more later on about the rent control issue. And, and Tracy, I do agree with your comment that, that leadership counts. You were mentioning that regarding John Moore. And I, I agree, leadership counts Tracy, and you guys look as contentious as this may seem throughout the city and as divisive as this has been throughout the city, you guys and the petitioners were leaders and brought this issue to the forefront and we're going to hear more about it tonight. And so your leadership did, did that and, uh, and now city council has, I guess, going to take a vote on this, on their version of it later tonight. And, uh, so looking forward to seeing where this goes and, you know, perhaps you guys will now consider withdrawing and letting city councils ordinance be the one that governs our city. Instead of having this divisive referendum that's going to rip us apart. And I look forward to speaking more. Thank you.
Okay, uh, it's John Moore. Thank you, Peter, uh, for the kind confidence about downtown and everything. But, uh, as far as the Asbury Park Dinner Table, I thought we announced that and, uh, it Kathy and Joe, the co-founders, they've been on many, many times and they're usually short and sweet. I'm like, no, 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 say more, give us more information. Give us the phone number, give us the cell phone number, give us the email number. So if Joe's following up and he's done with the two minutes to go, Joe, keep on giving the numbers. Thank you.
I am calling upon nine zero one seven, nine zero one seven. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Councilman Mayor, this is, hi, this is Ron Simoncini calling from the Asbury Park Property Owners Coalition. Appreciate you hearing me tonight. Uh, I want to echo what Peter Siegel just said and what some others have said that, this is not a perfect ordinance, but there's no such thing as a perfect rent control ordinance because rent control is not perfect. There were some specific things that we would have liked to see and address, um, within this ordinance, given that we recognize that the council's duty here is to find a way to protect the tenants relative to this issue of displacement. Since the beginning, we've all acknowledged that that was an important thing and the property owners have worked to find a way to create a mechanism to do that without rent control. But we do accept that this decision that you've come to, for the reasons you've come to it, may seem like the only way to do it. And so it is what it is. Um, but we do think that there is no reason to have this referendum. The group that brought it has succeeded in creating the dialogue around the issue, creating the impetus to correct it, and now we should all move on. The idea that there would be a significant investment in everyone's time and attention around what's going to be a very confusing vote because people are going to be told that there is no rent control when there is rent control is something the city really doesn't need. So very much appreciate, uh, the hard work that you've done over the last two months to try to figure this out. Um, we realize that it is hard work and in our advocacy, we want to push for our solution, but we also recognize that the council has a different set of objectives than the property owners and we think that you've done the investment in making, making this happen the right way. So thanks again and we wish you luck with the ordinance and we hope that the adjustments that are needed can be made as we go along.
Thank you. Next.
I'm calling upon Kathleen Muma. Please state your name and address for the record. Kathleen, star six to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
It's Kathleen Muma, 11th and Sunset Avenue. I just had a question about the roadwork that's been going on on Sunset. Do you know after the water company, after they're finished doing whatever this roadwork is, if they're going to repave the? That's my only question tonight. Thanks.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, the city adopted an ordinance several years ago when utility companies rip up any street that was barely repaved, recently repaved, they have to go curb to curb. So yes, Sunset Avenue will be curb to curb and every other street, be it central, Drummond, everything, as far as I'm concerned, has to be curb to curb also as a total repave. Which means they guys just, they don't have to do the curbs itself, but they have to mill and pave. And somebody can correct me if I'm wrong.
You are correct then.
Thank you.
I am calling upon three three five zero. Please state your name and address for the record. Three three five zero, star six to unmute yourself.
Uh, yeah, Ernest McNolly. Um, I sold my home today at 400 Deer Lake Drive, apartment 5B, the Santander. And, uh, I am now a snowbird. I'm looking for another place in Asbury. Uh, I'm living out of state. I don't want to give my address because of security reasons with the Asbury Park Police who are being convicted, who were convicted of coming to my home and committing crimes. So I'll continue. I also want to mention that you have some callers calling in that they don't give their full address. Mr. Tracy doesn't give his address. And I don't really know that he lives on Subal, but anyway. So I'd like to start out by saying, uh, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Quinn, the first time I think I've ever agreed with you when you said Councilman Kendall should get that cough checked out. Really? And I think you're listening, right, Councilman Kendall? Okay. So I heard his cough, so I know he's listening. And I'd also like to bring out that the J and J is not a vaccine. It's a one-shot. It prevents death. It prevents hospitalization. It's not necessarily what we call a vaccine. Now, I'm going to assume most people, police in Asbury and others, when they got a vaccine, they got the two-shot, which is a vaccine. The J and J is so that you don't die and that you hopefully don't go in the hospital and it's a one-shot. And I hear all these accolades about a, a big city like Asbury bragging that they have so much money now and all you could get is a hundred shots every two weeks for people on the west side. And I, I don't know how, why you're taking accolades for that, especially when the, the, uh, Commissioner Arno announced uh, people dying still in Monmouth County, hundreds of people getting COVID. And, and you're going to take, you know.
One minute remaining.
Okay, uh, let me move on. Uh, stabbings at the high school, not the first time. It's not going to be the last time. Gums, riots, stabbing, students shot dead a few years ago. Uh, in this case now, they're, they're putting out statements, we don't know, someone may have given a weapon to the, one of the students, but we don't think it was a school employee. Well, if you don't know who it is, how do you know it wasn't a school employee? And then what is a full-time police officer, five days a week with a police car and a, and a public safety director that's now the head of security at the school, Louis Jordan, what do they do? That school is a crime scene. It's a mirror of Asbury Park, the second most dangerous place in New Jersey, FBI statistics. And you have a police chief who denies it. You have a mayor who says that I'm insulting when I call in and bring.
Time's up.
Okay, uh, you, you've said several times about the vaccine we, so maybe in next meeting you say who we is, you and who, because I don't know who we is besides you. Thank you.
I am calling upon Julie Andriola. Julie, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi there, I'm Julie Andriola, 521 Cookman Avenue. Uh, just wanted to hop on and say, uh, thank you so much to Mayor and Council and Peter earlier for giving Asbury Park Dinner Table a shout out. We did just receive a very generous grant from the Economic Development Authority that is going to allow us to put about $10,000 of cash flow every week into the local economy between now and June. Um, this allows us to serve thousands more meals. This allows us to participate six Saturdays at Saturday Soup at Trinity Church. Um, and it also allows us to bring in more restaurants. Um, if you are a restaurant owner and you're not participating in the program yet, please reach out to us, info@asburyparkdinertable.org. Um, any other questions, by the way, about Asbury Park Dinner Table can go to that email address as well. Um, if you are looking for a meal, right now we are serving Monday, Wednesday, Friday, uh, United Fellowship Baptist Church on Third Avenue, at Second Baptist Church on Atkins Avenue and at St. Kevin's Church on Springwood Avenue. Uh, we also serve all three days, uh, we serve the same three days a week at Comstock Court, Robinson Towers and Mumley Homes Housing Authority Communities. Um, trying to think of, I know I'm missing something. Um, if you are looking for more information about us, please find us on social media. Um, Asbury Park Dinner Table on either Instagram or Facebook, asburyparkdinertable.org. Um, seven three two, seven five seven, six four one two. And, um, so again, yeah, if you're looking for a meal, stop by any of those locations. If you are a restaurant who wants to participate, please come take advantage of this funding. That's what it's here for.
One minute remaining.
Thanks so much. Um, we're just at this point looking forward to getting through hopefully the whole pandemic, but at the very least, um, getting back to the high season with everyone in good shape. Um, thanks so much. Have a great night.
Okay, do, do not cut Julie off. Uh, Julie, we thank you so very, very much. You, all the volunteers, all the founders and everything. Give the numbers another time. Don't waste your time. You got, you got another minute to go.
The numbers? Uh, I mean, I could give a lot of numbers.
No, no, phone, phone, phone numbers and emails so people can donate.
Sure, sure. Um, our email address is info@asburyparkdinertable.org for anything you need. Um, if you would like to make a donation, uh, asburyparkdinertable.org/donate. Um, all of our locations and times are on the website as well. And if you have any questions and want to give us a call, it's seven three two, seven five seven, six four one two.
Thank you.
Not seeing any other hands raised. Do I have a motion to close the meeting to the public?
Move to close?
Second Kendall.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is now closed to the public. We will now move on to minutes. I have the municipal council executive meeting minutes of February 24th, the 4pm. The municipal council regular meeting, February 24th, 6pm minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Yvonne.
Second Chapman.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on two. Resolution 21 dash 133, a resolution approving the payment of bills. Do I have a motion?
Move it Kendall.
Second Quinn.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 21 dash 134, a resolution amending temporary budget appropriations for the 2021 budget. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Second Kendall.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21 dash 135, a resolution authorizing the purchase of dual trash and recycling cans. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Second Clayton.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21 dash 136, a resolution authorizing the purchase of 4G modems for the parking pay stations. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Second Quinn.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21 137, a resolution authorizing the purchase of lockers for the sewer plant bathrooms. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Move it. Second Quinn.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yeah.
You forgot me?
Did I? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kendall. Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Did I catch everybody? I got, I got Mayor Moore, right? Yeah. Okay, resolution 21 dash 138, a resolution authorizing the purchase of various concrete planters.
Move it.
Move it Quinn.
Second Clayton.
Second.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21 dash 139, a resolution authorizing the purchase of lumber and hardware for lifeguard lockers. Do I have a motion?
Move it Kendall.
Second Chapman.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21 dash 140, a resolution authorizing the purchase of materials needed for beach locker roof replacement. Do I have a motion?
Move it Kendall.
Second Quinn.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21 dash 141, a resolution authorizing a professional service contract with Louis S. Goodfriend and Associates. Do I have a motion?
Move it Quinn.
Second Chapman.
Roll call.
Question though, Melody?
Sure.
Can I ask a question? So Donna, for this one, this is for the Berkeley, right? This is their, their desire to have.
So the Berkeley Carteret, uh, did a sound study and now we need, um, someone to review that sound study to, um, explain to us what the results are. Uh, our engineering firm T and M did not have an acoustical engineer on staff, so that's why we're, um, contacting with this, um, Goodfriend and Associates.
Okay, and can I just make another recommend, can, can I make up one recommendation? Oh, so only because I was on the council during the, the Asbury, which was wildly unpleasant with the, the music and the number of complaints. So can we have the Berkeley similar to what we made the Asbury do, do, which was reach out to the surrounding residential areas to talk about the types of measures they're going to take? Um, I mean, I know this hasn't been approved, but it, but you know, what they're going to do to keep sound mitigation from affecting the quality of life of residential areas near the Berkeley. I think we made, and you, and I think this is before your time Donna, but I know we made the Asbury do that. of residential areas near the Berkeley. I think we made, and you, and I think this is before your time, Donna, but I know we made the Asbury do that.
Yeah, Amy, it's before my time, but we can certainly do, you know, whatever was done in the past.
Okay.
And I just want to note that this, this is actually being paid for by the Berkeley's escrow, right?
Through escrow, yes.
Okay.
Okay, it, it's more, I, I just have one comment. Uh, I, I'm gonna vote yes, but I think it's kind of overkill because they already had their professionals testify it's equal to or better than the Asbury. So I, I don't know what we're looking for, but I'll vote yes on it. Call the roll call.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-142, a resolution authorizing the City of Asbury Park to implement the competitive contracting process to procure vendors to operate concession stands at Kennedy Park. Do I have a motion?
Move it Quinn.
Second Kendall.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
I abstain.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-143, a resolution authorizing a professional service contract to aspire consulting services. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Second Clayton.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-144, a resolution approving the disposition of surplus property. This is, um, turnout gear from the fire department and they wish to donate it to the 9/11 fund.
Move it Chapman.
Second Kendall.
Any questions or comments before we move to roll call? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-145, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a duplicate tax sale certificate. Number 14-00106, Block 11, 1101, Lot 24. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Second Quinn.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yep.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-146, a resolution of approval of a grant extension from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of Memorial Drive. Do I have a motion?
Move it Kendall.
Second Clayton.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 21-147, a resolution adopting the City of Asbury Park procedure for the administration and the inspection of federal aid highway projects. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Second Quinn.
Second Clayton.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-148, a resolution authorizing the purchase of personal protective equipment with Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funding through the CARES Act. Do I have a motion?
Move it Clayton.
Second Kendall.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 21-149, a resolution authorizing the temporary appointment of an acting tax collector, Patrice Martaselli. Do I have a motion?
Move it Quinn.
Second Clayton.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to ordinances. Ordinances for introduction. We have ordinance 2021-8, an ordinance establishing new requirements relating to storm water control within the City of Asbury Park, and amending and supplementing Section 30-58 entitled Storm Water Control of Chapter 30, Land Development Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park accordingly, with a public hearing date of March 24th. Do I have a motion?
Move it Clayton.
Second Chapman.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-9 for introduction, and ordinance authorizing the participation of the City of Asbury Park in the Community E- Energy Aggregation Program that creates an option for 100% regionally sourced, regionally sourced renewables, and amending and supplementing the code of City, the City of Asbury Park, in order to create a new Chapter 21 thereof entitled Community and Energy Aggregation accordingly, with a public hearing date of April 14th. Do I have a motion?
Move it Chapman.
Second Kendall.
Roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to second reading, public hearing. We have, um, ordinance 21-5, an ordinance establishing a rent leveling board as well as rules that regulate the price of rent and the rate of a rent increase for certain rental housing within the City of Asbury Park, and amending and supplementing the code of the City of Asbury Park to establish a new Chapter 15 thereof, which shall be entitled Rent Lev- Rent Leveling Regulations.
Melody, uh, excuse me, this, this is Donna. Before we open it up to the public, uh, our, uh, consultant Beth McManus is going to give a summary of the ordinance.
All ready?
Thanks Donna. Thanks Donna. I'm gonna ensure my screen and place a, a brief presentation up for folks.
And before we open it up to the public, the city attorney is gonna make a brief comment also as far as, uh, participation. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, did you want me to make that? We're at the conclusion of Mrs. McManus's presentation.
Let, let Beth go first and then when we get closer, you'll make that so it's in everybody's mind. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. So folks, my, my screen should be scare, shared, is that correct? Folks can see it?
Yes.
Great, thanks. I just want to make sure. So the first thing I want to do before going through some of the details of the ordinance is just provide a little bit of background. Uh, the first thing to note is that the council has been interested and actually authorized an analysis of this study back in July 2020, and this, of course, there has, uh, culminated with the ordinance up for public hearing this evening. And in fact, this ordinance was prepared by the Rent Control Subcommittee, uh, which included, but certainly, uh, was not limited to myself. Now, the intention of the, this ordinance is to first and foremost stabilize increasing rents for tenants across the city, existing as well as future tenants. But we're also seeking to balance between competing needs, and also where is appropriate to provide consistency with area rent leveling or rent stabilization ordinances. And the last item of note with this ordinance is, like, uh, just about every other ordinance that a municipality or Asbury Bar- Asbury Park passes, future amendments are permitted. And that's noteworthy because unlike any ordinance that might be advanced via an initiative petition such as the Initiative Petition Addressing Rent Control, those ordinances have a three-year freeze on any changes whatsoever. But this ordinance can be, can be amended, can be tweaked if necessary within the next three years, should the council decide to adopt it this evening. So in terms of what this ordinance applies to, one of the most important points, first and foremost, it applies to rental dwellings in a building containing five or more units. But there are a number of exemptions. The first is simply rental dwellings in a building containing four or less units. However, the ordinance also exempts applicable dwelling, rental dwelling units that are newly constructed for a period of 30 years. And so that's actually a requirement of state law for any municipal rent control ordinance. There are also a number of exemptions for special housing types, things like affordable housing, group homes, homeless shelters, uh, boarding homes, et cetera. And the other large category of exemptions are units with a short-term rental permit issued by the city. Another fundamental term of this ordinance is exactly what is the annual rent increase that's permitted? So first and foremost, there's an annual rent increase permitted every 12 months, and that rent increase is limited to a maximum of 3.5% of the tenant's rent or CPI, or, uh, otherwise referred to as Consumer Price Index, whichever is less. So it's a maximum of 3.5% or CPI whichever is greater. I'm sorry, I think I said less a moment ago. 3.5% or CPI whichever is greater. And just for, uh, folks that may be wondering, over the last 30 years, the maximum CPI has been 4.5%. Additionally, the ordinance spells out two other permitted rent increase categories. The first is a hardship increase where a landlord would appeal to the rent leveling board claiming a financial hardship, and that would address items such as, but not limited to, necessary, uh, repairs and also tax increases. There's also a provision for a capital improvements increase, where again, the landlord would appeal to the rent leveling board, and that increase is intended to address physical or service changes that would benefit the tenant. That item, that increase is limited to a maximum of 15%. And then the total annual increase, including the, uh, the annual increase, the hardship increase, and the capital improvements increase is maximized at 20%. So under no circumstance, through this, uh, rent leveling ordinance, will an applicable unit's rent be increased by 20% for that existing tenant. Another fundamental term is vacancy decontrol, and it is permitted in this ordinance. Vacancy decontrol allows for any rent increase with a new tenant. So once an existing tenant vacates a unit and a new tenant moves in, the landlord is able to negotiate that new tenant's rent without oversight or without control by this ordinance. There are a number of terms in the ordinance that are, that can be generally categorized as tenant protection. The first one is that 50% of any tax reduction received through a tax appeal must be supplied to the tenants. Also, as part of any permitted rent increase, whether that's the annual increase, capital improvements increase, or the hardship increase, the unit must be found to be in substantial compliance, and that means that the City of Asbury Park has confirmed that the dwelling is free of health, safety, fire violations, and also that the landlord is in compliance with the rent leveling ordinance. There are also terms set forth for tenant notice requirements, generally requiring notice for six, uh, of 60 days prior to a rent increase. It also requires that the standard of service must be maintained, simply meaning that the unit's, uh, level of service, maintenance, furnishings, et cetera, must be maintained during the life of lease. And lastly, it gives the tenants the ability to file a complaint with the rent leveling board. So it gives them a local option for addressing rent and housing quality concerns. Uh, as, as you may have noticed, I've talked about a rent leveling board, and this ordinance establishes one, and it also establishes the position of a rent leveling officer. The board will be composed of seven members, including not less than two landlords, not less than two tenants. Additionally, all of these members will be appointed by the council, and they'll be appointed for staggered three-year terms to ensure that no single council can re- will be replacing the entire board. As I said, there's also a position created for the rent regulation officer. That position is intended to be fulfilled by a city staff member, and their duties are, are generally to support the board activities and, and the members. The powers of the rent leveling board include issuing rules and regulations that will address, uh, their activities, how their meetings will be run. They'll also supply information to landlords and tenants intended, uh, in part to assist with compliance, uh, but not limited to that. They'll also hear and decide appeals and complaints. And lastly, they'll assess penalties for violations. And with that, that's a, a very brief overview of the ordinance before you this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and then Fred, if you want. Fred, if you want to go with your little.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Given that there may be many speakers who wish to voice their opinions this evening on the proposed rent leveling ordinance, all speakers will initially be limited to a period of no longer than three minutes per speaker to address the council on the ordinance. If the speaker has not concluded his or her comments during that three-minute period, then they will be permitted to speak again at the end, once all speakers have had the opportunity to be heard once. That way, we will not have a situation where one speaker takes up an extraordinarily long period of time and makes all other speakers wait to be heard. At this time, I will now turn the matter over to the mayor for the conduct of the public hearing.
Thank you.
Are you ready for me to open the meeting up to the public, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to open ordinance 21-5 to the public?
Move to open?
Second Kendall.
All in favor?
Aye.
Members of the public, they participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. I will give you a warning when you have one minute remaining, and remember, your comments must be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing. I am calling upon Mitch, Mitch Khan, please state your name and address for the record. And star six to unmute yourself. Mitch?
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is, uh, my name is Mitch Khan. My name is Mitch Khan. I live at 177 Upper Lakeview Avenue, Ringwood, New Jersey. I'm the Vice President and Director of Organizing for the New Jersey Tenants Organization. Uh, I would like to comment on your ordinance, and, uh, there's a cou- a couple of things I would like to say. Number one, the rent increase provision. You have, in your ordinance, you say it's 3.5% and, uh, you have an unlimited maximum if the Consumer Price Index goes beyond that. This would be the only ordinance in the state that is like that. Most ordinances will have a CPI increase with a specific max. So, uh, I don't know why you, you chose that particular formula, uh, but you should keep in mind that landlord costs only go up at about 50% of the rise in the Consumer Price Index. Also, you have unlimited vacancy decontrol, which is why you have this problem in the first place. Essentially, you've had unlimited vacancy decontrol because you have no, have had no rent con- rent, rent control ordinance. And now, you, you're opening up to like tremendous rent increases in, you know, in the future to future tenants. Uh, I would also note that, uh, your tax appeal provision, if a landlord applies for a tax appeal, the land, the tenant only gets back 50% of the return. So your ordinance is going to encourage landlord tax appeals. Why would you only give the tenants 50% of return when in fact they pay? Why would you only give the tenants 50% of return when in fact they pay 100% of the property taxes? Approximately 17% of the rent dollar goes for property taxes. Another issue is the proposition of the rent board. You have two tenants, two landlords, out of seven members. Well, that's the minimum. It could be five to two in favor of tenants, it could be five to two in favor of landlords. You really should specify that more carefully. So what you're asking the tenants to do is to support an ordinance which is really quite weak and would be one of the weakest rent control ordinances in the state. I find it disconcerting that a number of the landlord proponents during the public session earlier noted that they didn't like this ordinance. But believe me, if I were a landlord, I would love this ordinance, because this was written with all the kind of things they have been demanding and none of the things that the tenants want. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Lena Leonard, I'm calling upon Lena Leonard. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Lana Leonard. I am on 1219 67 in Neptune. And I'm speaking as a journalist today with just some questions, if that's okay. And my question today is, why is rent control an issue now? Why wasn't there a rent control ordinance thought of or implemented at the start of the redevelopment project in Asbury Park?
Does that complete your comments?
No. And my other question is, someone earlier in the Property Owners Coalition had said that there is rent control in Asbury, but it seems to be that rent has risen significantly over the last 10 years, and I'd like to better understand where that rent control is when it seems that so many lifelong residents are being pushed out at this time, and how will this rent control ordinance keep that from happening? And that concludes my questions.
Thank you. Next.
Calling upon Alexander. Alexander, please state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Alexander Patrick Krzysztof, the fourth, 610 Suhulav. I oppose this ordinance, and I think out of respect for everyone's time, there'll be a lot of great speakers that'll come after me, who will also bring up points against this, but I really want to focus on one point in particular, and that is that of good governance. I believe that this ordinance is contrary to the ideals of good governance, and while it might be nice to talk about this ordinance like it is better because it can be changed and we are not committed to it for three years, I think that is incredibly shortsighted, because do we really want to be back here every council meeting? Do we want each council meeting to be dominated by competing amendments to this ordinance? This is clearly an issue which lays bare fault lines and corresponding divides that define some of the most difficult challenges our community faces, and I think it is not only patently irresponsible from the perspective of good government, but disregards the needs of this community in favor of political cover that this body is trying to give itself, which is made quite evident by this body's failure to, while consistently referencing how this ordinance can be changed, never actually elaborating on the process by which amendments could be added, which I guarantee will both be politically and socially arduous for this community. And that is not even taking into consideration the fact that rent, vacancy decontrol is just acceptance of the slow tide of gentrification, and we should not have our community members thinking that to move on to a different opportunity in another part of the state or another part of this country means ceding their neighborhoods, their blocks, and their communities to the forces of gentrification. And I think that, in closing, letting a rent control ordinance to building to five or greater units in a city in which a large amount of housing stock, if not the majority, is duplexes or single-family homes, disregards every working-class family that lives in this city proud of the fact that they live in that duplex or live in that single-class home, and it's saying to them that while you might have lived here for this law, you are no longer welcome in that home, and we are no longer ready, willing, and able to make sure that that home...
One minute remaining.
I'm aware, that you and your family have called home for so many years that you can't afford it anymore, and we're not willing to guarantee that. And I think that every member of the city council, as well as every member of this community, knows and understands what's actually at stake here and why this ordinance is not just an affront to the good work we are trying to get done, and by we, I mean the entirety of this community with the referendum in April, but also turns its back on the core of this community that has stood by this city despite decision after decision after decision that tries to debate this community's character and disregard its history. And we're not willing to put in place an actual effective rent control ordinance, but we're willing to possibly violate the public access doctrine by giving private parking spaces to the Ocean Resort. I think the priorities of this council should be more aligned with the referendum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Matthew Sigmund, please state your name and address for the record.
Matthew Sigmund, 700 Emery Street, Asbury Park, New Jersey. You know, I'm against rent control, I'm against rent leveling. You know, everyone's stating exactly what the ordinance will be, either the councils or the people proposing it. No one's talking about the effects. It's just the cause. So the effects will be that multifamily residential, multifamily real estate will be going down in value. So what does that mean? That means that the tax burden is going to get picked on by retail properties, office complexes, industrial warehouses, and those that are single-family homes and duplexes and triplexes. So we're always talking about buy local, go local, and all that stuff, but we're being hypocritical because this is literally going to hurt all of our small businesses, because their tax burdens will be going up over time. And to me, it's just, I think it's shortsighted. We're not seeing the long-term effects of what will happen here. And you know, Asbury Park, as the beginning of the council, the meeting started, it was incorporated in the late 1800s, it has its ups, it has its downs, and we're going through the ups right now. And I mean, I think shame on us for doing anything, literally anything, that stops the progressive momentum of our town. This town has come back because of its history, it's an investment by people in the community, and people all over the state of New Jersey and New York. Creative minds coming down, reviving our music scene, our art scene, our hospitality scene is second to none in New Jersey, and hampering, you know, government ordinance hampering the real estate market of this community is going to slow our progress. And to me, that's just very shortsighted. You know, Mr. Kahn brought up some points. You know, I mean, why wouldn't it be upside if CPI or anything goes higher? Where's the landlord protection there? You know, and I think as a landlord, I'm not for any of this. I mean, the councils is clearly better than the other oppositions, but at the same time, why don't we stick together and try to fight it and so we can continue to invest in our community? Thank you. We can continue to invest our community and keep pressing Asbury Park to new limits. I mean, I don't know a better city down the shore than Asbury Park right now, and this type of ordinance will slow us down. You know, one thing I want to point out is, you know, everyone's like my home, you know, I rent, it's my home. You know, if you don't pay your mortgage, your taxes, or your sewer, you're going to lose the home that you actually own. So, you know, in this world, things cost money, and it stinks. I wish everything was for free, but it's not, and I think we're just sort of losing that semblance of real world and how we need to, you know, pay for things, and that's kind of it. I really hope that the council puts this down. I really hope that we can come together and, you know, come to other means, maybe some type of tax where we can organize funds for those that actually need the money instead of just blighting us with this legislation. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
I'm calling upon Maureen Nevin. Maureen Nevin, please state your name and address for the record. Maureen, star six...
Maureen Nevin, Delight Court. That's very funny. I do think that Marshall Sigmund just asked you to vote this ordinance down. You know, it is so upsetting, this whole prospect, and who was it? Peter, who said this is going to tear this town apart? I think that's a bit of overkill. I don't think it's going to tear this town apart. But, you know, you have to stop and think, why did a group of people get together on their own dime, their own time, and not making any money off of this? I'm talking about myself and the other four petitioners for this ordinance, which is going to be voted on by the public on April 20th. There'll be an election just for that ordinance, and it's the people's ordinance. This is what the people want. 700 people signed to have this ordinance introduced to the council. 700 people. You'd be hard-pressed to get 700 people to agree on much in Asbury Park. And I'll tell you, this was the easiest sell I ever saw in my life. People just wanted to sign for rent control, because there's enough out of control in their lives. You've got the COVID disease, you've got, you know, jobs so scarce. Anyone over, I mean, this was the situation even before COVID. Anybody over 40 need not apply, that kind of thing. People can't afford to pay the rent. And I really resent the landlords who talk about this...
One minute remaining.
Like it's, thank you, that it's like half a dozen people on the West Side, probably, which means it's code for color, colored people, who can't afford to pay the rent, and we need to help them out. We'll think of something. We'll give them a unit that's affordable, but we won't give them any parking spaces. This town has to wake up and listen to the people. The people want the town to care about everyone, and this should not be victimized. I'm sitting here with Daniel Week's excellent paper, where he went into the uprising 50 years ago. Do you know what those people asked for? The people were out there in the streets, they wanted rent control 50 years ago. This is now. It's coming. Get used to it. Everyone's coming out on April 20th to vote for this.
Time's up.
Thank you. Next.
Calling upon Catherine Healy. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Catherine Healy, 305 East Avenue. I'm a resident, a homeowner, and a landlord in town, and there's one point I will agree with some other callers that we've heard throughout the process, that we do need other avenues to protect our community, but that also needs to come in addition to strong, bold, and progressive rent control. At a recent Jersey City Council meeting on rent control, someone brought up a great point that much of the rent control fearmongering happening in our tri-state area is comparable to the conversations on raising the minimum wage 20 years ago. People spread fear that raising the minimum wage would reduce employment and a bunch of other things, and time has proven that that argument is incorrect. In various rent control studies done in communities throughout New Jersey and California, the researchers found that the fearmongering around rent control that's happening right now on this call, and housing supply was, again, simply just fearmongering. These studies on the effect of rent control or lack thereof on communities have proven that strong rent control measures keep rents down and keep residents in their homes, but only when those ordinances are bolted. The studies found when rent control ordinances included loopholes or incomplete measures like vacancy decontrol, the impact of the rent control ordinance was significantly reduced and even encouraged landlords to push out their tenants in order to be able to raise rents a larger amount on a new tenant. The absence of strong rent control in a community also obviously contributed to less stable communities and residents to divest from the quote-unquote improvement of their city, because they rightfully view any of these perceived improvements or gentrification will mean higher rents and possibly being pushed out. Many landlords who talk about housing as a commodity instead of a human right is exactly why we need strong rent control.
One minute remaining.
When landowners view their tenants as a commodity instead of humans building a home and putting down roots, we lose so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Calling upon Carrie Butch. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, how are you? 500 Delight Drive, Carrie Butch, for the record. Listen, John, Amy, Yvonne, Eileen, Jessie, you are our neighbors. You understand that what has been going on in this town for the past many, many years, okay? What bothers me is that, you know, we paid for the redevelopment plan. Our citizens paid for a redevelopment plan that is absolutely pushing people out, and it took away all those homes and businesses on the waterfront. Now, we've paid for a rent control study that really wasn't a rent control study. And as Maureen mentioned, it was citizens that got together and worked with fair share housing to create a rent control ordinance that would protect their neighbors and their friends from getting pushed out. It was 100% acknowledging that there has been a wrong, is a wronged party in this redevelopment of Asbury Park that has been happening over the past 25, 30 years. When there's a wronged party, correct me if I'm wrong, we get together and we do something to right it. And when you're having, in 2010, when there was rents of like 900, 950, 1,000, 1,100, and then in 2020, according to the MLS in Ocean and Monmouth County, the average price of a one-bedroom rental in Asbury Park was $1,772. The average price of a two-bedroom was $2,416. I mention this because that's not reflected in the supposed rent control study that you did, that we paid for after coming up with a rent control ordinance that protected us. Now, we're being handed a rent control ordinance that doesn't protect. You know, a couple of questions that I have, and I'm going to have to come back on, it looks like. How many units are actually exempted? What percentage of rental units are not in this plan that are not protected by this ordinance? I want a rent control study that we paid for that would be able to tell us that. What are people actually paying? Why do we have to come to the table and tell you what people are paying, when you're quoting like something from, you know, 10 years ago? Why permit vacancy decontrol? My goodness, that talks about pushing people out. I'm going to have to come back, guys. All right, take care.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Calling upon 9700, 9700. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, again, it's Peter Siegel on Seventh Avenue. Thanks again for the chance to speak. Couple of things I want to point out. So to echo a comment earlier, this is all very confusing. When this goes to referendum, we are, as voters, being asked to vote yes or no on the group of petitioners' proposed ordinance, which petition was certified back in December. It is not to vote yes or no for the city council's ordinance. When we go to the referendum, we're asking to vote yes or no for the petitioner's ordinance, the one that the affordable housing advocates are discussing in their comments here tonight. So someone asked what they meant when they said Asbury Park already has rent control. What the answer to that is, if we vote no, if the voters vote no at the referendum, the city council's ordinance, should it be voted in tonight, would then kick in and become the ordinance of rent control for the city. So that's what that comment meant. So I wanted to make it clear, I'm sure everyone understands anyway, I just feel better making it clear, that the referendum is about voting yes or no for the petitioner's ordinance, and if we vote no, then the city council then kicks in and becomes the law. So, yeah, it's amazing that all this is happening without a study. I couldn't agree more. In fact, that's one of the things that the property owners and residents and business owners have been clamoring for since even before December when this happened. Where's the study that sort of shows us the data? What's the need? We recognize, as business owners and property owners, that the need is not just for seven people of color on the West Side, although I will point out that certain members of Affordable Housing Coalition have been quoted...
One minute remaining.
Have been quoted in the press numerous times at the beginning of all this, saying that in fact it was about people of color on the West Side. So it's a bit contradictory. But sure, we do want to know what the need is. And... And, you know, I want to just reiterate that the property owners, residents and business owners do agree that there is a need. It is not the petitioner's rent control ordinance that's what's needed. City council is as much, if not more, a member of the community because they're governing it every day of their lives. They put in the work. They see the need. They've crafted an ordinance that addresses this need. It's gonna be important for voters to vote no at referendum. By voting no, you get the city council's ordinance. You get city council's rent control. Thank you so much.
Thank you, next.
Calling upon six zero eight two. Please state your name and address for the record. Six zero eight two, star six to unmute yourself. I will move on to another number and we'll come back to that one. I am calling upon three six four, six four three five, six four three five. Please state your name and address for the record.
Matt Daniels, ten twenty-six Monroe Avenue. First, I would like to thank the Affordable Housing Coalition as well as the city council and the Property Owners Coalition for your continued efforts to provide necessary rent control to the residents of Asbury Park. The time and energy spent by everyone to establish clear cut and concrete rent control should not go in vain. Unfortunately, the proposed ordinance by city council does not succeed in establishing fair and just rent stabilization measures for the residents of Asbury Park. The residents of Asbury Park deserve a concrete rent control ordinance that would take us back as soon as possible. The Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition has worked continuously for over two years to deliver a fair and much-needed ordinance to the residents of Asbury Park and have even taken steps to include the rights of not only residents but landlords as well as the proposed, the proposed Property Owners Coalition. We, we see by leveling out single-family housing as well as buildings that contain less than five units, city council's ordinance only provides a thin layer of protection to a thin portion of the city's rental population. It fails to protect a large portion of families that have known Asbury Park as their home for generations. City council's ordinance does not cease the rapid displacement of the working, or does not cease the rapid displacement of the same working-class families who have spent their lives improving the quality of life in the city of Asbury Park. The council's ordinance only cap is on the wrong side of the math. With a three-point-five per year increase as its foundation and a maximum increase relying on whatever the Consumer Price Index may rise to, the city council's ordinance fails to protect residents of Asbury Park during the fickle economic valley of a global pandemic. It fails to alleviate unnecessary hardships for the eighty-plus percent of renters in Asbury Park and instead provides protection only to the profit margins of landlords and outside developers. The rent stabilization ordinance that is proposed by the Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition offers a maximum cap of four percent. It's offered security to residents of Asbury Park, ensuring them that they will not be priced out of a city that they themselves play a crucial part in developing. It's for these reasons that I endorse the Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition's rent stabilization referendum. And I encourage city council to do the same, to commit to a three-year plan and see what actually works. Anything less than that with changes is just to commit to chaos. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, next.
Six zero eight two, six zero eight two. Please state your name and address for the record. Star six to unmute yourself, six zero eight two.
Go to the next.
Okay, I'm calling upon nine zero one seven, nine zero one seven. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Mayor and Council, it's Ron Simoncini from the Asbury Park Property Owners Coalition again. I want to clear up a couple of things, I think, with some factual information. Mitch Khan, who I agree with on the composition of the rent control committee. And I don't agree with Mitch all that often, but he certainly is right about this. You could define a composition of your rent levelling board to be three property owners, three tenants and a council liaison. You could make it two property owners, two tenants, two homeowners and a council liaison. But we do think that your representation on that board would be very important. We don't think that you should appoint a board where there isn't supervision or a nexus from a council member. So I applaud Mitch for that and I think he's right. On the maximum increase, though, he's wrong about that. There is a maximum increase because it's governed by the unconscionable standard in Monmouth County, which is ten percent. I don't think you'll ever get there, but, and maybe this is a technical point. As far as the Consumer Price Index is concerned, it always falls behind CPIU. CPIU is the Consumer Price Index for housing. It's always more expensive than the regular Consumer Price Index because as we know, prices for things like lettuce and other goods vary with, you know, weather and other circumstances. But generally, excuse me, speaking, the Consumer Price Index has been between a half a point and one and a half points for twenty-five years. The housing costs, as we all know who are on the phone, have escalated far more than that. So I don't think that was fair. The other thing is somebody came in and talked about rent control studies and saying that, well, rent control studies do prevent rises in rent. Well, of course they do. That's what rent control does. But what the person failed to mention was rent control does not go to the people who need it. Rent control is something that benefits people who are stable households. The people that you're trying to protect, if you're on this tenant advocate's side right now, is you're protecting people who aren't even in Asbury Park. You're saying that people should be able to come to Asbury Park and benefit from the tenure of a tenant who was there before them. Well, that doesn't sound like it's good for Asbury Park. What's good for Asbury Park is to protect the people who are here now, if that's the objective. And again, we didn't love the idea that rent control would be the device used to do that, but if it's going to be here, vacancy decontrol doesn't protect anybody in Asbury Park. It invites people in from outside of Asbury Park to come to housing that will by definition be worse-used because it will wear and not have the resources to repair. So the other factor of the matter is, yes, housing's a human right. But if we want to provide affordable housing, we have to build it. We can't expect a private property owner to say, well, I'll buy this and then you can tell me what I get to charge for it. That's gonna decrease investment. It decreases the willingness for people to be in the city and it's just plain not fair. So I thank you for your attention.
Time's up.
Thank you, next.
Calling upon nine two nine nine. Please state your name and address for the record.
Robert White, President-elect, New Jersey Realtors. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to speak tonight.
Give us, oh, 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 Mr. White, I give you a couple, give us an address.
My address is West Conch Drive in Ocean Township.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. So I have a letter that I hear that I'd like to read into the minutes of this meeting. On behalf of New Jersey Realtors and Monmouth Ocean Regional Realtors, letting you know that we express our support for ordinance twenty twenty-one dash five concerning the issue of rent control. After reviewing the proposed ordinance, the Monmouth Ocean Regional Realtors and New Jersey Realtors are supportive of the efforts put forward by yourself and the city council to find a compromise on this issue. We believe the ordinance will make both Asbury Park a more affordable place to live while also protecting the ability of homeowners who rent out their homes to be able to afford to properly maintain them. The Monmouth Ocean Regional Realtors and New Jersey Realtors believe that specific provisions in ordinance twenty twenty-one dash five strike the necessary balance between making Asbury Park an affordable place to live while at the same time ensuring that homeowners renting out their one-to-four family home will not see it devalued by broad-reaching policy of rent control, which would have a negative impact across the city. We also are supportive of the fact that this ordinance will not adversely impact short-term rentals. This ordinance will ensure that the small homeowner who only rents out their home is not negatively impacted by a broad policy of rent control affecting all homes as they may not have the means to maintain their homes to benefit of the renter residing in them subject to the rent control. In addition, we are supportive of the provisions in this ordinance creating a policy of vacancy decontrol in Asbury Park to allow those units affected by rent control to increase their rents when a tenant voluntarily leaves. As market rate, as market rate rents could increase dramatically during the tenure when the tenant resides in a rent-controlled unit, by creating a policy of vacancy decontrol, the city of Asbury Park will assist the owners of larger units affected by rent control to be able to ensure that when a new tenant moves in, they will have the means to ensure their home can be properly maintained. The Monmouth Ocean Regional Realtors and New Jersey Realtors also appreciate the modest increase is permitted under the ordinance on an annual basis, which again assists the landlords in being able to maintain their properties and the landlords will have the ability to apply for increases if substantial improvements are needed for the rental unit.
Thank you, next.
I'm calling upon six zero eight two, six zero eight two. Please state your name and address for the record. Star six to unmute yourself.
Hey Melody, that's the third time you called six zero eight two. So skip it to the end and then we'll try again. And keep on going to other people.
Okay, I'm calling upon eight one three two, eight one three two. Please state your name and address for the record. Eight one three two, star six to unmute yourself. Eight one three two, are you there?
All right, am I unmuted?
You're unmuted. Your name and address, sir?
Yes, Bill Macklin, seventeen oh one Ocean Avenue, Asbury Park. I'm gonna begin with examining these two ordinances by starting with, at the beginning, in the recitals, the whereas's. That's just an illegal term for the whereas's you find there. Considering the data stated in the recitals of both proposed ordinances, Asbury, are someone talking to me? Asbury Park is a jurisdiction primarily of tenants, renters, with an income average relatively low when compared to Monmouth County. Half our population is seriously rent burden, cost burden with rental expense. And that rent continues unabatedly, jeopardizing home stability, adults, youth and children. The council's ordinance is a statement of, and its statement of purpose doesn't address the tenant relief. Instead, its intention is to modify the coalition proposal. I guess it's backed into that position. But in any case, its express purpose is to provide more flexibility, quote unquote, to property owners and reduce the unnecessary cumbersome implementation, quote unquote, of the coalition proposal. It's primarily a statement of what the council opposes in the coalition proposal. It's not a vigorous support to remedy an acknowledged need heretofore ignored by policymakers. Council's statement of purpose assumes that the correct policy position of rent control is to strike a balance between the rights and needs of landlords and tenants. That purpose also assumes that power and influence of the competing parties is approximately equal. Neither assumption is close to accurate. The overarching reason for the ordinance is to remedy an expressed, present and continuing injury to low-income and many other cost-burdened tenants. A priori, landlord economic power and influence dwarfs, dwarfs that of tenants, an imbalance made even greater by the intense gentrification in this city. The council's other statement of purpose regarding flexibility and less cumbersome implementation appears to be a response to the inclusion of standards to be met in the implementation of rent control in the coalition's proposal. Council's solution made plain in the full document is to reduce those standards. If not in number, then in specificity. Again, this is an error by the council. Not this time in fact, but in judgment. The parties to rent.
Okay, okay, thank you, next. Thank you, next.
I'm calling upon Mike Zurek. Mike Zurek, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello?
Mike, please state your name and address for the record.
Mike Zurek, three oh five Eighth Avenue. I just, I just a comment, you know, I'm a landlord, a small landlord in town and listening to some of the landlords about this ordinance and the ordinance going to referendum about, you know, rent control in general. It's pretty egregious listening to some of these people speak on this, given, you know, the fact that landlords are currently being subsidized by the Federal Reserve in the form of low-interest rates. So I mean, what you're seeing in town, you know, over the last ten to twenty years is that landlords have done extraordinarily well in Asbury Park. I mean, your financing costs are as low as they've ever been still to this day, you know, over the past ten, ten years. Rents have gone up fifty percent at least and your property values have gone up fifty percent at least. So the fact that landlords are coming on this call and saying that they have it so hard and it's so difficult to be a landlord in town is absolutely insane. So that's, that's just, that's one point. And then my other, I have two other questions. One has already been brought up about a study on, you know, how many units this, the council's proposal is actually gonna affect versus the referendum proposal. And then my, my last question is, you know, if a landlord owns twenty-four unit properties, so they have eighty units in town, are they still exempt from the rent control? And if that's the fact, that, that seems just, that doesn't make any sense to me. So you own eighty units and you're totally exempt from rent control. That just, I just don't agree with that, with that point.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. That was it, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, next.
Calling upon Felicia Simmons. Felicia Simmons, please state your name and address for the record.
Felicia Simmons, ten thirty-four Soul Avenue, Asbury Park. My, my statement about this specific, because I really don't have to say much because a lot of people brought up the point. But with this rent control, we're speaking about the DV. And we keep speaking about it being about low-income people. But what it is, it's really about the Asbury Park we love, right, diversity. I have myself, I don't make any money really, I'm an activist wife. But I have a billion more friends that live in town and wealthy friends and people in the middle and people struggling and middle class and low, low, low income and actually a person with no home that I, I love him. He's in the wheelchair and he kinda, he's funny. I enjoy him. This is part of the town that I love, having that diversity. And this specific, our, this specific bill doesn't address that. It actually takes the hit right to the middle class. And we constantly hear, oh, it's about decontrol, it's about the people who don't live here yet. But we forget it's about people who want to leave their apartment and maybe stay in town. It's about people not feeling the pressure, landlords pressuring it, which has happened and continuously happens. The constant raising of rent and pushes them out of their apartment so they can charge what used to be a fifteen-hundred-dollar apartment. Now they can charge twenty-four-hundred dollars for that apartment. Why would they keep the one in their apartment that they have when they can get somebody, which I continuously hear, but from the Property Owners Association, the wealthy people coming for the city that can afford it. There is no excuse to gouge anybody, right? To get your money worth, which Asbury Park is a place where you've got your money worth. It's a place where you can buy a block, say a decade or so ago, for a hundred thousand dollars. And right now that block is worth probably.
One minute remaining.
About two or three or four, five million dollars, right? Or even more, I'm underestimating, like twenty-five million dollars. So you have that block which you only paid a hundred thousand dollars for and now it's worth multiple millions of dollars. So we, no one is hurting here but the people who care. So, we, we, no one is hurting here but the people who can afford to stay here and call it home. And it's about the people who are here, the people who wanna come because we have such a great and diverse city and, and good history and, and keeping that, right? It's about gentrification, um, revitalization over gentrification, and, and, and that makes it about the people. If someone said, you know, you're, you're counsel, which I respect you all, right? You're more important than everybody else. No, you are government for the people, by the people, and that's really the, the premise of our constitution of United States of America, and which I love because it's a living, breathing document that incorporates the changing of time and.
Time's up.
Thank you, Felicia, next.
I'm calling upon Charles Gormley. Charles Gormley, please state your name and address for the record. Charles Gormley, star six to unmute yourself. All right, I'll, I'll move on to someone else. I am calling upon.
Hello, hello, I'm sorry, I was having trouble on mute.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much. My name is Charles Gormally. I'm an attorney with Brock Geiger in Roseland, and I'm counsel for the Property Owners Coalition. I'll, I'll make a couple of brief comments. Normally, my presentation.
Hold on, hold on, sir, okay. A law firm doesn't give me an address, an address, please.
Roseland, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry. The, normally when I appear for, uh, property owners on behalf, uh, of their interests and before governing bodies, I'm advocating pretty heavily against rent control, and I, and I think that all of my interfaces previously, uh, as the council was considering this ordinance, I spent a lot of time, uh, and discussions even with TR about why rent control doesn't really achieve any of the advocates of rent control thinks it does, and that's why in many, many communities that had rent control historically, they have over the years rejected it. But I'll focus instead today on what I think are three very important themes for the council to keep in mind, and that's compromise, honesty about facts, and respect for opposing views. And I think what the council really did in forging this ordinance was attempt to compromise very strong competing views, some of which I don't agree with, and obviously the tenants don't agree with any of them. Uh, but one of the, one of the difficulties is that the tenants in advocating for their proposal would not agree to change one word of it, and that's a difficult situation, uh, to govern from. And rather than, um, inflict that type of program on the municipality, I think the governing body is doing the responsible thing. They're, they looked at the sides, they gave each side something they wanted and something they didn't want, and they tried to forge a compromise. So, I, I respect you for that, for that job. Secondly, it's about honesty about the fact.
One minute remaining.
Rent control does not create affordable housing, and yet, and if anyone who ever signed that petition really read the ordinance involved, it was filled with suggestions that the amount of affordable housing was gonna increase as a result of rent control. That hasn't happened anywhere in the history of rent control, and it won't happen in Asbury Park. Finally, I'd say that it's very important to respect opposing views. I respect the tenants for taking the time to advocate for the most progressive rent control ordinance in the history of rent control that I've ever read. Um, I don't think it's the right ordinance for Asbury Park, but I respect their efforts. And I also, I think the fact that we're having this discussion today is largely because of those tenant efforts. Um, I'd say this is an important first step to adopt this ordinance. The next step is to make sure that the, uh, position of municipality at the voting box rejects.
Time's up.
Thank you, next.
Pam Lamberton, I'm calling upon Pam Lamberton, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Pam Lamberton, Sunset Avenue, Asbury Park. Um, when I hear a critic of the referendum proposal say things like progress, 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 we must not hinder the city's advancement, what I hear is gentrify, gentrify, gentrify. And if our city's growth continues at the rate that it has in the past four or five years, we are going to lose our wonderfully diverse Asbury Park. We need to slow down a little and consider the residents who rent here to live. Um, also, the argument, um, that says that the referendum ordinance cannot be changed for three years if it's, if it's passed, that's not entirely true. Um, if during that three years, the council sees a need to modify the ordinance, they can present the change to the residents as a question on a, on the ballot, and if the residents agree with the council's change, then it will be changed. Uh, and I'd like to make sure that Bill Micklin calls back in and finishes everything he said to say. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Calling upon Tracy Rogers. Tracy Rogers, please state your name and address for the record.
Trace, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Tracy Rogers, so, I, 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 there's so much I gotta go, so I know I'm gonna be back, but I have to, I have to say that I have to commend Kathy Healy and Mike Zerzak for, for their comments, and, and these are things that we have to relatively see, uh, landlords standing up for our ordinance and, and, and what we have. But I also wanna point out a couple of things, and Mr. Gormley says opinions and, and facts, and, and I think everybody has a right to their opinion, but not to their facts. We did, we were the only people to, to, to even suggest a compromise for that ordinance because the landlords did not want full de, uh, uh, vacancy, wanted vacancy decontrol unlimited, and we just can't see it. Asbury Park is in a detrimental time, it's in a place where people are being pushed out, and I, and now I wanna talk about other landlords who, who, who basically have come on here, who, we've gone through social justice issues and basically says that we, that the tenants who can't afford Asbury Park can't, can't live here, and, and people have lived here all their lives, and for people to, to, to estimate to say, on your way up, if, if you're not, i- i- if, if you can't afford to be here, then you should leave, I think it's the worst thing this city could ever accept. And this is what this ordinance says. When you're looking, I, I came out of Dollar Tree and I, and I forgot that, didn't bring my bag, and, uh, we have an ordinance that says that, uh, we, we, uh, uh, no more bags, and we're so progressive, we talk about landfills and everything, but this ordinance doesn't protect thirty percent of the residents, people living in single family houses and up to four units, and those people have been subjugated, and I know this.
One minute remaining.
They have known about the, 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 what we call the slum landlords, the people that, that, that have, uh, affected these people's lives by the things that they've hardly done. And any tenant landlord that I have come across who's seen our ordinance agrees it is not, this, this is a good ordinance, and, 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 and not the one that the, the, uh, council has presented is okay. This is the truth. This is, and, and I'm gonna speak on fact, not fiction, uh, later, but to give facts about, uh, how this ordinance was put together, why it was put together, and the issues that we're facing now, and we have to somehow get by and say sometimes we have to look out for people who are the most vulnerable in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
I'm calling upon Ernest McNolly. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, hi, Ernest McNolly. Uh, again, I sold my home, former Deal Lake Drive, apartment five D, Asbury Park, New Jersey, today, and, uh, I'm trying to come back as a snowbird. I'm, I'm in the market for a place in Asbury, and relative to this, um, ordinance, I'd like to say that I've start to look through MLS at rentals, and I, I can't afford it. I, I may not be able to move back to where, I was born in Long Branch and raised in Asbury and Long Branch, and I'd like to think even if I move out of state, that I could come back as a snowbird, maybe rent a place, nothing fancy, just something. And yet, they, it's, 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 um, I don't, um, I don't know what the word is. I mean, who, who is this market for? Billionaires and millionaires? I, I, I can't afford to pay thirty five hundred dollars or twenty five hundred dollars for a, a small one bedroom. I can't. And you get these developers come on. I, I mean, these people are millionaires and billionaires, and they got every government program, every tax abatement, every pilot program, every low financing, the best lawyers, the best everything, and they're just making millions and billions. And what happens to average people? Now, I was a homeowner there for fifty, fourteen years, right? I'm, I'm basically out because I, I couldn't afford to keep the place, the taxes going up, the expenses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, here, here I am, but that's no different than people. I mean, with maybe less income than me, I don't know, but I find it repugnant that developers call in and make reference to, to, to colored people on the west side. To colored people on the west side, like Mr. Segal, or a Mr. Lieberman who called in and said that Deal Lake Drive is becoming a ghetto because of affordable housing? How do these people get away with these statements? And worse than that, how does the council let them get away with it? That's what I'd like to know. And through all this and through Operation Bid Rig, we still have the same attorney for the city, Ann Selgrim-Harron, for the record.
Your comments to the ordinance in question, thank you.
Well, that is my comment. I'm saying.
Cut him off, cut, cut, cut him off. Melody, shut him down.
I'm calling upon Kathleen Muma. Kathleen Muma, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, it's Kathleen, eleven oh four Sunset, Asbury Park. Um, I'd just like to say that I support rent stabilization efforts, um, especially when they're coupled with, uh, promoting affordable, uh, units in the housing supply and also promoting workforce development. I don't, I think that a, for a rent stabilization, uh, measures to be effective, those other prongs have to be part of the puzzle. Um, and I'd also just like to echo some of the, uh, previous commenters, Katie Healy, Bill Macklin, Mike S. that lives on Eighth Avenue, um, all of their comments are, are what I would have to say too. Uh, you know, housing, housing is a right, it's a, it's a fundamental need, it's on the bottom of the hierarchy of needs. Uh, we, we need food and shelter in a successful community, and if people can't afford a place to live, then we have to, we have to change the system to, to set our residents up for success. Um, another thing I just wanted to comment on is, uh, kind of one of the features that we've been, or something that we've been seeing as a feature of the council ordinance is that it can be changed versus the referendum, which is in place for three, three years without change, is how I understand it. Um, I'm just trying to, I, I don't really understand if, if the city council ordinance is passed and then we determine something's not working, like all of a sudden, uh, the rent controlled places are, are located in high density apartment buildings, um, how are we going to go back and remedy that if, you know, like the damage would kind of already be done? Um, so it's, I, I'm just not totally on board with the, with the city council ordinance, so.
One minute remaining.
And, uh, I guess, you know, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we have completed the, uh, first go around for everyone. So, um, unless anyone can see that I've missed anyone, I will start calling on people for the second turnaround.
I don't believe Polly talked yet.
Okay. Uh, Polly, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I hit unmute. I'm on unmute, got me?
Yes, star six.
Okay, hi. Eleven hundred Fifth Avenue. I, I ju- I do want to support and echo what Kathleen said and Mike S. D. and some others. Um, Asbury Park and Police Streets Coalition does support affordable housing and, um, the, the, it's, it's all of a piece, enabling people to get around in the city, to live in the city affordably, to be able to continue to maintain the, the, the diversity and the vibrancy and the history that we have in this city. It's, it's really not all about, at all about gentrification and, um, making sure that people are, are able to ride, walk, live, work, and do everything they need to do in the city. I just wanted to put a, a period and explain, exclamation point on that, and thanks so much for listening.
Great. Thank you, next, and Melody, if it's all repeats, whatever happened to six oh eight two? Did they drop off?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see them anymore.
Okay, then if it's all repeat and go on, but, uh, Mr. McNolly's been muted, so do not go back to him because we said do not stray from the subject. He's strayed, he was warned, he's muted, so do not entertain his next call.
I gotcha. I'm calling upon Alexander. Alexander, please state your name and address for the record.
I was Patrick Prusotsky, six ten Sewell Ave, apartment fourteen S. Uh, yeah, I just wanna echo a couple of comments that were already made, um, I think, uh, and I know this was touched upon by, by a previous speaker, um, and I think it's a really potent idea that essentially, uh, in the city council's ordinance as opposed to the referendum ordinance in April, uh, the city council's ordinance in its tacit exception, uh, acceptance of gentrification is essentially telling majority of the working people that have stuck with this city throughout its redevelopment, that the redevelopment they paid for was nothing less than paying for the experience of being priced out of the community that they love, and I think that it'd be a shame to, after all of the beneficial articles are written about the rise of Asbury Park and the new heights that we were able to rise to, that we would let this city be pushed off of the cliff of gentrification upon which we currently sit. Uh, I think, and the one, uh, I think that, you know, vacancy decontrol, uh, is perfectly in line with accomplishing this goal, and it is a goal that, that the quote unquote city stakeholders have late set forth, and I think it is perplexing that the city council would put up an ordinance that is essentially just the wish list that the property owners tried to offer in, in the first place. And I think, and another, uh, speaker had referenced the inherent imbalance, uh, between the power possessed by landlords and those of tenants, and typically speaking, you know, uh, it is the power of, of tenants that rests with the government, whereas obviously the power of, of property owners, uh, can be afforded. And I wanna just say this one more time because I really think this point needs to be driven home, and that is to have a, a rent control referendum that can be changed by amendment at any point in time will result in nothing less than chaos for this community. And I think we all wanna move on past this issue. We all, we, none of us wanna be showing up every city council meeting to debate this amendment, that amendment. Through a three year commitment, rent control ordinance is enough to, to get a sense of exactly how this is going and where it's going. I mean, I work with municipal governments for my day job, and the one thing you realize is how fragile municipal governments can be, especially when there is a public that is as, as fortunately engaged as.
One minute remaining.
Thank you, as constituents here in Asbury. And I don't think this city council has given enough thought to the consequences of having an ordinance that can be changed by amendment each and every time. I think that the city council considers that to be a much easier idea and a much more palatable thing to respond to because a majority of people, I don't think are gonna look out that far. And I think that the inability or the reluctance of the city council to really acknowledge those long-term consequences is an abdication of your responsibility that you are elected to uphold, is an abdication of your responsibility to uphold a good and stable government that takes into consideration the needs of this community, and I also, I find, and look, you know who's gonna love that? Uh, Mr. Gormally, who's gonna get a plethora of global hours for, for time in memoriam as we come back amendment after amendment, city council meeting after city council meeting to address this. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Carrie Butch, I'm calling upon Carrie Butch. Please state your name and address for the record.
Carrie Butch, five hundred Deal Lake Drive. Okay, a lot of, um, what I was going to say has already been said, so I just wanna appeal to the council right now to, um, to take their responsibility as the protector of, of the folks that have been wronged. This was not intended to be a compromise, it was intent, government should not be protecting profits of landlords, but they should be protecting working families that live in Asbury Park and a lot of their constituents that are artists and musicians. I don't know if Bruce Springsteen would have been able to, 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 to stay here if, um, if, 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 if the rents were this, maybe now he can stay there, but when, when he was actually writing songs on, uh, on Cookman and, and, um, on the beachfront, I don't know if that would have happened. and, and on the beachfront, I don't know if that would have happened if we would have had a town that we, we have. I, I don't think, there's a lot of boogeyman kind of thing about having rent control. And, you know, we've talked about it. Hoboken has rent control. It's a completely desired city. Everybody's doing well. Properties keep going up. But teachers are allowed to stay there. Firemen are allowed to stay there. Cops are allowed to stay there. Grandmas are allowed to stay there. So I, I do appreciate Yvonne bringing it down when she said last time I have benefited from rent control in New York City. And when I needed it, I needed it. I do appreciate Amy for voting for our ordinance when it was, when it was put in front of her. I do think that we, we need to talk, we need to think about, you know, who, who is government supposed to serve? And who do you serve? Who does the mayor and council serve? I mean, you know, Bob Dylan wrote a song. You gotta serve somebody, right? It may be the devil, it may be the Lord, but you're going to have to serve somebody.
One minute remaining.
One minute remaining, okay. It may be the devil, it may be the Lord, but you're going to have to serve somebody, okay? So think about who you serve and vote your conscience and understand everyone else will be voting their conscience, conscience on April twentieth when they vote for a bill for an ordinance in Asbury Park that protects the people that protects the renters. And again, I appreciate your time and your, your consideration. I would like it if when we pay for a rent control study, that you give us a rent control study. Because I feel like we're paying for a lot of things that turn around and benefit folks that aren't paying the bills, but we are. So thank you very much. Vote your conscience. Serve somebody.
Thank you. Next.
Felicia Simmons, I'm calling upon Felicia Simmons. Please state your name and address for the record. Felicia Simmons, star six, unmute yourself.
Oh, no, it was me and I just kept my hand up. I just want to say ditto to everything said before me and ditto.
That's it. Thank you. Next.
Calling upon Tracy Rogers. Tracy Rogers, please state your name and address for the record.
Tracy, can you hear me? Tracy Rogers.
Yes.
Mayor, I, I, I would like to make a request. I thought the comment that direction from Fred was, you know, after everyone spoke, we could probably go back to with the original intent of speaker speaking because I wanted to address this whole ordinance and what the reasons behind all the issues were. And, you know, I'll be gladly to wait till the last, if the people want to continue to go over and over. And if I have to go this path, I'll do that too. I'll just have to note where I started and what I ended. But I, I thought we would obsess to that, to that format after everyone originally spoke.
So we, we were asking everybody to stick to three minutes. And we never said the first round, second round. So the second round, I'm going to ask everybody to stick to three minutes. Believe me, before the night's over, you can talk as long as you want. So you've still got two minutes now if you want to keep on going. And if not, if you want to get on the end, you know, I can't promise you you'll be the last one because somebody else could raise their hand after you speak.
Oh, no, no, I mean, you know, not, not the last one, you know, just to, to feel the outline. But, you know, I, I'll go until we can get back to the, to the normal process. But thank you. I, I would like to say that a lot of these things are, are grounded in the formation of what, what went on in this city. And this, this ordinance wasn't haphazardly thought by a couple of extremists as, as Matthew Sigman had pointed, has called us in this, in this thing and, and has basically said, you know, people can't afford to live here. But what I want to say is there have been some issues, not only with the rent control, but issues with code enforcement, issues that have devastated and, 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 and pushed people to, to unforgivable situations. And if we haven't looked at these situations carefully enough and reexamine our past, we, we're doomed to repeat them. And, and these are issues that I know this council knows. This council knows about extremist landlords who, 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 who've pushed rents up to ungodly determinants and who have, who have basically just, just for their greed and profit have, 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 have pushed people out in, in, in buildings. And I'm not saying one, one, one household. I'm talking about you turn around and in six months a building is empty. And, and these are people that have lived there, people have studied. And they're just not minority people. And if anybody classifies me as just saying, no, this is about seniors. This is about my friends who are black, white, Indian, every nationality and color, every race, every gender. And that's, that's.
Time's up.
Okay, Melody, before you go on, I see six oh eight two is back.
Okay, I'll jump on.
This is the third and last strike.
All right.
Let's hope he gets on.
Okay.
Here's you.
I'm calling upon six zero eight two. Six zero eight two, star six, unmute yourself. Six zero eight two.
Hello?
Please state your name and address for the record. Yes.
Yes, this is Mitch Conigan, New Jersey Tenants Organization. Do I have to restate my address? I did it once before.
No, oh, oh, is your phone number six oh eight two?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you're registered under your name and a phone number. So we were trying to figure out who six oh eight two is.
Okay, yeah, this is Mitch Con. I called you before I was online on my computer. Now I'm on my phone.
Oh, that's.
No problem. Go ahead.
Okay, I, I, I just want to let, you know, say that, you know, I, I, I've been involved in these rent control campaigns for almost, over, over almost fifty years now. I've been involved in dozens and dozens of local rent control issues. You know, there are a hundred and five municipalities in the state now that have rent control. Most of those have been in existence for anywhere from thirty five to forty five years. The towns have been working fine. I understand that you are offering this rent control ordinance because you really want to ask the tenants to back off of the referendum. But there are problems with this ordinance. And that is, you know, you, you've offered them an ordinance which is really like really untenable. Okay, you know, to propose an ordinance with unlimited vacancy decontrol is not going to solve the problem. It's going to exacerbate the problem of affordable housing in Asbury Park. It's going to encourage unscrupulous landlords. And I'm not saying most landlords are unscrupulous because they're not. But it's going to, you know, encourage many landlords to not make repairs, to force their tenants out, to get higher rents. And so, you know, if I were a resident in Asbury Park, I would never vote for a rent control ordinance that has unlimited vacancy decontrol. And, you know, and also I don't understand why you would give landlords not only unlimited vacancy decontrol, but you're giving them a minimum rent increase of three point five percent. And that could go up astronomically if, if we enter into a period of inflation. Why would you give landlords a rent increase of three point five percent when the Consumer Price Index right now is one point four percent? You're giving them almost three times the inflation rate as a rent increase plus vacancy decontrol. So if tenants were asking me, should we back down and accept this ordinance and walk away from the referendum, I would say absolutely not. And if the council was really serious about this, you would have offered a rent control ordinance which would have been generally a compromise, and it's not. Also, this should not be a surprise to anyone.
Time's up. I am.
Next.
Calling upon Matthew Sigman. Matthew Sigman, please state your name and address for the record.
Matthew Sigman, seven hundred Emory Street. Look, I, I just want to.
Hey, 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 look, look, Matt, Matt, can I interrupt you for one second?
Yes, sir.
It's John Moore. Again, we told everybody they'll get another bite of the apple and everything. But we're looking for new subjects. I'm not saying you're not going to do it, but not repetitive statements, please. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor. So, I mean, I, I, you know, the council's intentions are great here. You know, they're trying to do something of a compromise, as Gormally has said, Peter has said, and, and I think the council's intentions are. I'd like to ask the other side, Felicia and Tracy, if this passes tonight, are you going to give up? Not, excuse me, give up. Are you going to repeal yours tomorrow? And I think the answer is no, you're not going to. And it's just going to come down to, you know, like everyone's talking about the vacancy decontrol. If you can't do vacancy decontrol, why would landlords fix their properties? Straight up, I think, why would you fix your properties? Another thing we're not talking about is, you know, some landlords are just going to condo their buildings. It's going to defeat the whole purpose of this. They're going to condominium their units. They're going to sell them because who wants to deal with the tenant landlord business in Asbury Park? You know, housing's a right. It's an interesting concept. And, and that, and, and it, it may be true, it may not be true. If it is true, why are private landowners the ones bearing this for everybody? If housing's a right, then the government should then come involved and help people provide for that. You know, look, landlords aren't bad people. We're hardworking people, just like everybody else are. Our business happens to be real estate. And our job is to provide clean, safe housing for the residents in our buildings. And I'm proud to say that my buildings are as diverse as they come. And I'm proud of that diversity. And I work hard to make sure that my buildings are, are kept and taken care of. Another misconception is that landlords push out people. That is the most contra, that's on the contrary. You know, we, you know, forget, forget about COVID. We've had this work remote movement in the last two years where, you know, I've even mentioned it's the mayor. The four things you do with the city building is you give paper, you take paper, you give money, you take money. Everything can be done digitally. What you're seeing is people from New York and Philadelphia and urban environments come down here because they can work, be an accountant or a lawyer or, or even a teacher from home and walk their dog to the beach for lunch. It's not the landlords doing this.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. People are demanding to come down and that's driving prices. You're seeing homes on, in the west side on Summerfield listed for like three hundred fifty thousand, four hundred fifty thousand dollars. You know, people, people want to be here and people are paying these prices. It's not landlords, it's people who want to be here. So, look, I mean, we all live in this beautiful community. We all love it here. You know, nothing's perfect. And I think that if we have to, you know, work with something, I think the council's works. I don't love it. I think you're going to see your, your retailers upset. They're going to have to raise prices because their burdens are going to be higher. And, you know, I thank everyone for their time. And, you know, I just hope that, you know, the greatest intentions don't lead to the worst of consequences. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Bill McElin, Bill McElin, please state your name and address for the record. I'm calling upon Bill McElin. Star six, unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Look, I'm sorry about the confusion there.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Bill McElin, seventeen oh one Ocean Avenue, Asbury Park. I just want to finish my statement. But one, one thing I want to insert. Okay, look, I may be eighty nine and an old geezer, but I am an academic. And I'm tired of people standing up with some kind of authority and saying that the rent control does not change the renter's situation. I'll cite you one, one institute, Urban Institute. It's sixty years old. It has an impeccable reputation. You don't have to do a lot of study, council members. Just open the page to one of their features, one of their recent studies on rent control. It has a lot of problems, but it solves the problem of increased rents. What I'd like to finish in my other statement is simply, "The council's other statement of purpose regarding flexibility, quote unquote, and less cumbersome implementation appears to be a response to the inclusion of standards to be met in the implementation, rent control in the coalition's proposal." "Council's solution made plain in the full document is to reduce those standards, if not in number, then in specificity." Again, this is, again, this is an error by the council, not in fact, but in judgment. "The parties to rent transactions are entering new and uncharted waters of rent control in Asbury. Landlords, many of whom have been governed heretofore by market forces only, now must meet a series of express responsibilities. There are bound to be disputes early and often, particularly in the first year."
One minute remaining.
"Disputes demand clarification, and clarification demands specificity." I, I don't envy the position you're in as council members. You're up against a very significant issue that you've got to deal with. But I think, you know, either, there are two choices here for me, and I think for many people who share my opinion. That is, either you change that, your own proposition and make it amenable, solve renters' problems, or we need to vote for the coalition's proposal. And that's, that's all I have to say. I thank you very much. I'm sorry about the confusion. God bless everybody. Good night.
No, no confusion, sir, and I thank you, and we'll go into the next. Thank you, sir.
Calling upon Peter Segal. Peter Segal, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi again. Good evening again. Peter Segal, Seventh Avenue. I, I'd like to take this opportunity to clarify some points. So I'm, I'm a member of the Property Owners Coalition. I can share with you all that the property owners in that coalition house a significant number of police firefighters and teachers. No one's telling anyone that they can't stay. You know, we were hearing about comments about fear mongering. And I mean, my gosh, no one's saying to anyone, you can't stay. We have more cops and firefighters and teachers in our buildings than, than anywhere. It's awesome. And diversity, it's in our buildings. It's here. And we recognize that people need protections from excessive rent increases. People that are here now need that. We've never not once disagreed with that. I mean, it's, it's amazing. We've got the group of property owners here agreeing that there needs to be protections in place. And the divisiveness and the, and the anger and the hatred is just, it's mind boggling to me. And everybody here is my neighbor, my friend, my associate. But I mean, this thing is ripping the city apart. No one's saying anybody can't stay. We're agreeing that there needs to be something done. But what the property owners are saying is the petitioner's version of it needed a second look. So the city council stepped in and gave it that second look. Okay. The other comments that have been made tonight about who's paying for what? We've paid for the redevelopment plan. They've paid for this. We've paid for that. Well, the reality is, is that city council has to run our city. I mean, they have to pay for the cops and the fire and the safety and the schools and the roads. Do you like all that stuff? That's increased and gotten nicer and better? That's because of the budget. That's because of the property tax revenue from commercial buildings.
One minute remaining.
And from rent, and from rental buildings. That gets impacted with rent control. I've had, I've had all the, you know, before this, this petition, people would come to me and other property owners and say, wow, thanks for making the buildings look so great. Thanks for doing so much for the city. Thanks for making a different type of housing stock that attracted a different kind of person. Thanks for attracting people that wanted to live here that I can now hire. You know, now what do we get through this divisive petition? It's like property owners are evil, landlords are evil, white people are evil. I mean, all this stuff. And it's, it's, it's really upsetting to me. But the business of it is that something needs to be done, and I think the city council's ordinance does it. And I just hope that we can continue to be friends, peers, and associates and neighbors after this. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next.
Maureen Nevin, I'm calling upon Maureen Nevin. Please state your name and address for the record.
Um, Field Lake Drive or Field Lake Court, where am I? Um, okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Maureen.
Okay, good. Yeah, I, this characterization of, you know, everybody hating the landlords is over the top, as they used to say. You know, it's odd. Peter, you know. The thing is, we have always made ourselves available for negotiating. For example, we, we discussed the possibility of a vacancy decontrol that would take place every few years at, at a certain percent. um, at, um, at a certain percent, um, and we were rejected. Uh, obviously, the landlords don't want any limits to what they can make. And, you know, it's, um, greed is, um, very, uh, infectious disease. Um, so I wanna say, I wanna speak, uh, before I forget, directly to my fellow grandparents. We have plenty of affordable units, a lot of, uh, people who are against rent control, say. Why do we need to have rent control as well, these, um, units that are controlled rents? But, you know, we may be living in those, but what about the cousin, the aunt, the uncle, who wants to be near you as we get older? Where are they going to rent? You know, if they, if they all have to fit the mold, somebody out of Tri-City News, you know, the glamour, 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 um, you know? You can, you can only do that up until thirty-five, you know? After that, you have to start worrying about, you know, your old age and saving for your old age. Um, I wanna say that, uh, if I've learned anything from this is that we need to have a more open council. Uh, why won't you say whether you rent units as well? We need to know who, who is governing us. Um, if, if they have views themselves that are based on their own experiences, we, we deserve to, to notice. Um, and the landlords as well. Why won't they say how many units they own or manage? If they're not proud of it, I mean, some of them have twenty-four, sixty-eight, I don't know, there's tons of units, um, that they're either own or they're managing. And what's the need for so much secrecy? How can we understand their expenses the way they want us to versus their income when the landlords won't share the information with us? I'd like to, I'd like to pose those questions as well as, um, how in the world the, the city could come up with, um, you know, their answer to our referendum being a, a proposal, an ordinance that has, uh, no...
Mine's up.
Thank you. Next.
I'm calling upon Matt Daniels. Matt Daniels, please state your name and address for the record.
Matt Daniels, Monroe Avenue. I just wanted to say a couple of things in response to some of the landlords that spoke about this new ordinance proposal. I heard one of them linked compromise and honesty, and I don't think that compromise and honesty can necessarily go hand in hand on this occasion. Uh, honest facts point to the residents of Asbury Park being pushed out since the start of the redevelopment project of Asbury Park. Uh, compromise with the entity that has pushed those residents out or only lead to regression. Uh, I, like, I respect the efforts of everyone involved. Uh, I'm sure we all do, but effort doesn't mean anything without some sort of progress. City Council Bill does not offer that progress to the residents of Asbury Park. Those same residents that voted to elect city council are now being penalized by city council's new ordinance proposal. Also, I heard on, uh, the, the increases in, in the rent are, are, are intel, they're, they're the things that are telling the people that they can't say. That's, people don't have to say that, uh, a tenant cannot stay. They can just raise the price. Uh, and this also isn't as divisive as, like, some of the landlords are making it. Uh, the renting population of Asbury Park is extremely diverse. There are black people, there are white people, there are Hispanic people, uh, and they are all renters, and they all deserve some sort of right. And the ordinance that is going up for referendum on April twentieth offers those rights. And city councils bill are, does not, does not offer full coverage for the residents of Asbury Park. Thank you very much. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Ron Simicini, Ron Simicini, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you.
Ron Simicini.
Hi, it's Ron Simicini, Asbury Park Property Owners Coalition. Uh, my office address is Rutherford, New Jersey. Um, I, I think a few things, uh, have been commuted here that really don't make a lot of sense. The fact is that this rent control ordinance protects rents. It eliminates rent increases beyond a certain point. That point is not particularly generous or ungenerous. It's about the midpoint of what you see in other ordinances. The other thing that was brought up by Mitch Khan was that vacancy decontrol is such a horrible thing. Well, of the hundred and five ordinances he mentions, about eighty have full vacancy decontrol. Fewer than ten have no vacancy decontrol, and the last time I studied it, it was six. It could be more than six now, it could be less, but it's definitely fewer than ten. So even of the ten or twelve ordinances that have some form of vacancy decontrol that's not full, Hoboken was, was mentioned earlier in the call. So Charlie Gormally, who has been on this call, and myself, we worked on the vacancy decontrol ordinance in Hoboken. And I think you can put it that way, with being one of the moments that pushed Hoboken forward didn't hold Hoboken back. And Hoboken continues to have rent control, one of the most strenuous in the state, but it recognizes that owners need to reinvest in the properties. So those references are references that defend the council's view of rent control, not the petitioner's. I think the sufficient increases that are there need to be accompanied by a commitment to code enforcement. So if the fact of the matter is that code enforcement is an issue, that's an investment that the city needs to make separately from rent control. I don't know that that's an issue. From what I can see and the properties that I've visited, it looks to me like things are relatively well maintained. If they're not maintaining the smaller properties and code enforcement's an issue, yes, you should rein, you should invest in that. But don't have a penal, a penal rent control ordinance because some people feel as though apartments in some parts of the city aren't particularly well maintained. Those two things don't match.
One minute remaining.
And that's where I think a lot of this is, and I, I think you hear a lot of like, "Let's penalize these people. They've made enough money." And I'm sure a lot of people in Asbury Park did very well, um, as investors in, in property. And a lot of them got their heads handed to them in previous generations. We don't wanna go back. We also don't wanna lose the fabric of the municipality. People who are here should be able to continue to be here and protected from egregious rent increase. That's what the rent control ordinance is about. It's the other agenda that doesn't seem to benefit Asbury Park. The agenda that says, "Let's find a way to keep prices under market so we can invite people in from someplace else who haven't earned the right in Asbury Park to be protected with undermarket pricing." And that seems like you've reached a fair compromise on that. I haven't heard a compromise from the tenant group that says what vacancy decontrol they would allow.
Thank you. Next.
I'm calling upon, uh, Tracy Rogers. Tracy, please state your name and address for the record. Mr. Mayor, are we, are we doing away with the three minutes?
No. Hello?
Yes, but we'll, we'll, we'll move to five.
We'll move to five minutes? Okay.
Hello?
Tracy, we, we've got you. Go ahead. Tracy, can you hear me? All right, we'll come back to Tracy, or... I'm calling upon...
Okay, okay.
Tracy, you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Uh, we can now, yes.
Okay, yeah, it keeps going back and forth. Uh, there's so much stuff to go over. One, um, I, I'll talk about the community stuff later, but, uh, we have not looked at, they, they, they keep on saying a misconception that, uh, taxes will be pushed off to other... I don't think Hoboken, I don't think Montclair, who have passed ordinances, uh, have seen that, that, that happen to, to, to the other residents. And yes, there is a, there's a symptomatic process. And, and I've said this continuously, and, and Mr. Ron Simicini, you can ask the mayor, you can ask, uh, Peter Siegel. We did offer up a compromise, uh, uh, on the vacancy decontrol for five and maybe three years because we know this, this ordinance, but I, as, as I said in the beginning, this ordinance was a Band-Aid. There is people who are being pushed out, and we needed to stop it to come up with a full plan. And I said, "We all need to sit down." And I would have sit down with, with, uh, Mike Siegel, Peter, uh, Mike, uh, uh, now I forget names. Mike and, and Peter Siegel, and said, "Let's all sit down. Let's sit down and let's figure out what's gonna happen over this time so we can come up with a plan that we look forward to everyone benefiting." But right now, people have to realize that we've known about this problem since I've been in Asbury Park since two thousand fifteen, and nothing was done. And we had an event at the high school where people talked about the high cost of living. People could not live here. These are things that have been said. Nothing got done, so this group stepped up and did something. And we saw the problem happening and increasing over time. This is the problem that we're having here, that people think that this has not, uh, uh, come about as some magic pill that just popped up and didn't. This is the problem that this community has been talking about, and seven hundred people, and not only on the west side, but on the east side. I've talked to so many people that ran up and was willing to sign this ordinance because they found their rents going up increasingly and they were being pushed out, and these are not rich people. These are people that work in, in the restaurants. These are people who work, uh, uh, in, in some of the smaller shops we have. And this is the point, and this is not divisive. I've not said anything. I have friends all over the city, and I hope that not, that's not said about me because I've never said that. This is about our community as it is right now, to stabilize it, to figure out and to protect people who have been here a long time. People have come in to make this community when it was, uh, going through transition, and people not being pushed out now when it gets better. And also, the high cost of, uh, uh, taxes is not, is because we have a pilot program that increases your taxes that says, because people are selling off and investors are coming in, they have raised your rent because this pilot program says that the, uh, rent increase has to be seventy-five percent of, of, of what they seller prices are. And who's making this? These are investors. These are people. But we have to take care of the people who are most affected in this community. And I, 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 if Mike, i- i- if Mike, uh, uh, wants to walk with me and talk about people being pushed out, go to our website, apwantsrentcontrol.com. And, 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 and people have, have put testimonials up about them being pushed out. And, and we're not talking about small landlord buildings. In two, in two thousand sixteen, we had a multi-unit building where a guy wanted to protect his family because there were roaches in there, infestation, a multi-unit building, and tried to spray and blew a hole in the wall. We should not have that. That should not happen in Asbury Park. We all love Asbury Park.
One minute remaining.
And, and, and in order to get things done, we have to sit down and look at every aspect of our living conditions, our relationships, and where we wanna be. And if we take the time to look at this and to, to say that a three-year hold on rents that have been escalating for years and, and people are being pushed out, then we aren't, where, where are we at a community if we can't take three years to, to, to talk about our most vulnerable and put a plan together? So when we go out here, we're not taking this ordinance back because this ordinance that's here does not protect all the, all the people that ours does. And this is what's causing all the problems. We need to take this look and take this time to reexamine our community.
Thank you. Next.
I'm calling upon Alexander. Alexander, please state your name and address for the record.
Alexander Patrick Krusowski, six ten two eleven Monroe Towers, last time I swear. Uh, the one thing I just wanna, uh, to, to put out there and to make clear to everyone who's still listening to this call is that the opponents of the rent control referendum come, uh, April, uh, are lawyers and public consultants. Their interests are not necessarily, and they have no obligation for those interests to align with the broad majority of the city. They're not advocates for the city. They're advocates for their clients. That is what they are bound to by law. And, uh, no, they, they do a pretty good job, but at the end of the day, their goal is not necessarily to advocate for the city and for the broad majority of these city's residents, is to advocate for their clients, and their clients share one thing in common. They all oppose actual, real substantive rent control. So when we have people come to this meeting and, you know, basically talk about the city making broad assumptions about the opposition here as if this has not been a, that real rent, as if real rent control hasn't been a, a top priority for the residents of this city, um, I think that they should probably take some more time researching what the history of the city is and exactly where this city has come from. It is no secret that in this particular moment, in, as in right now, we have more people moving to the city than ever, more people of greater means moving to the city than ever. And to talk, and to say that nobody is pushing people out while at the same time saying it's your right to charge whatever you want for rent, or it's your right to not have your, your rent, the rent you're able to charge limited to three percent, four, a three percent, four percent increase, is two contradictory statements. You know, I think that, and as, as, as Mr. Daniels had said previously, at the end of the day, we know no landlord has turned around to their tenants and saying, "Get out. We don't want you anymore because you don't make enough money." Instead, they just raise the rent to the point in which somebody has to move out. And if they don't, they decrease services. And as Mr. Rogers has said previously, this is all about dignity in housing. This is all, this is all about not just that people can continue to afford to stay here, but that there, that there is no added incentive for any landlord to skimp on services in the interest of pushing somebody out in order to get a higher paying renter in their next. And if that is going to be any landlord's precondition for offering affordable housing and acceptable housing, and housing that retains human dignity, I don't think that anybody would say that there's a place for that landlord in this community. And I think that at the end of the day, even these landlords themselves know that they are in for a cash flow. They are in to make, they stand to make a lot of money even with rent control. And as many previous speakers have said, this rent control ordinance that is going to referendum in April is a boilerplate rent control referendum. It is real rent control and nothing less than that. And again, I just, I, I find it very reprehensible that there hasn't been the same amount of engagement, at least publicly. If, if it happened in a private meeting, that's fine, but at the end of the day, I think we would, at least myself especially, would like some more public engagement with, with the referendum, with the referendum ordinance. And I don't see why, when the city council goes to put up an ordinance that everyone, all these landlords are talking about as compromise, it looks exactly the same and is a laundry list of exactly the compromise that the landlords wanted. And some of the most important pieces that we will be voting on and hopefully voting yes on in April were excluded. And all, you know, I won't rehash those because I think a lot of people have talked about them, but at the end of the day, I really want the city council to really think who you're siding with here. Like, I get it. Like, look, if you're paying public consultants and lawyers, like, the money's gotta mean something, right? They gotta provide some type of service, and providing the service here, and it's clearly working because they, you guys adopt the referendum, and I don't know. And, and really, this is less a dig and more or less a, a expression of my own disappointment of a city that I grew up near and grew up in, that I always saw as a beacon of progressive politics of how, and progressive policy of how a city can rise together, and how a city could, could give a little to take a lot. And I think that the city's beginning to turn its back on that, and it's beginning to favor the interests of...
One minute remaining.
Thank you, of property owners and developers over the residents that have stood by waiting for their day to come in vain. Thank you.
Thank you, and before we go to the next, I think both Tracy and Alexander were not too repetitive, so I ask all the future speakers again, uh, continue what your thoughts were, but please do not be repetitive with your previous thoughts. Thank you.
I'm calling upon Peter Siegel. Peter Siegel. Peter Siegel, star six to unmute yourself.
Oh, uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, this is, this has been a very passionate discussion tonight. We, we've heard very passionate comments from some people that no longer live here as of about four seconds ago. And we've heard some very passionate commentary from people that just moved into town about four seconds ago. Um, and it's, it's, uh, very interesting to hear the level of passion that Asbury Park can incite in, uh, in former residents and very new residents. Um, you know, Tracy, I, I, I wanna use this opportunity to speak to you directly since we haven't ever once spoken directly before. Um, you mentioned and invited people to go to your website and see the testimonials. Tracy, I've done that. You have in your video testimonials, Bill Stevens. He used to be my tenant. So I'm gonna put myself out there now. Now, you know, he was my tenant, so I can, I can speak to that. Bill Stevens lived in a building that we took over back in two thousand and thirteen. Bill Stevens lived in a building that we took over back in 2013. Mr. Stevens was paying a rent that was extremely below market and at a time where we elected to increase services to the building, uh, including new entryways, security, security cameras, locks, uh, you know, things which just weren't a part of Asbury Park housing stock vocabulary. Let's face it, the housing stock in Asbury Park was awful. Well, it got better and rents that were extremely below market, not 5% or 10%, 50%, 40% started to increase. They did, but at, at, at what we all thought at the time was a very fair trajectory. And he mentioned that trajectory on his, in his testimonials. Well, after about a year of that, I got, I got an email from Mr. Stevens and a phone call from Mr. Stevens saying, "Thank you so much for what you've done for the building. Things are really going great here. I have been on a list to move to Asbury Towers for some time now. They've called me, there's a vacancy for me. So I've been here for 10 years and now I'm going to go to Asbury Towers. Thank you, Peter Siegel," is what he said. And I've got the emails. And your video of Bill Stevens' testimonial that you just invited the whole world to go look at does not say that. Your video says that Bill Stevens was pushed out. And by the way, he left, after he, he moved into Asbury Towers, he has since left town. So he's no longer uh, a, a resident of Asbury Park, not by increasing rent. Uh, you know, Asbury Towers is a, is not a privately owned building. It's a state-run facility.
Hey, Peter, hey, Peter, it's John Moore. And I'll let Fred agree or disagree with me. I appreciate the personal stories, but I mean, we're talking about the ordinance. So I mean, as much as it kind of segues into it, I'd rather like just talk about the ordinance and not get into personal stories.
Fair, fair enough. And, and, and thank you. And Tracy, I do hope we can talk about this because you see where I'm going with it. And so I, I will just say that, look, the way governance has to work for the city is it has to work for everybody, not just for one group, not just for another group. And city council put forth their version of what a rent control ordinance looks like, which they think works for everybody. The property owners don't love it, but it certainly works better than the petitioner's ordinance, which is going up to a referendum. So I encourage everybody to vote no at referendum because you still get rent control. And I thank you. And Tracy, I hope we get a chance to talk, really. Because I think you have other things you want to share with me too.
One minute remaining.
Thanks. Good night.
Thank you. Next.
Matthew Sigmund, I'm calling upon Matthew Sigmund.
Yeah, I don't want to make this too much longer. It's getting tired and it sounds like we're going to April. So, you know, I, I just want to say that, you know, uh, the council's done a great job. Um, you know, they're trying to find a healthy medium because it shouldn't be one-sided. And it's not going to matter because they're not going to withdraw their, their ordinance anyway. And you know what? I, I, I pray that it doesn't pass, but if it does pass, it's going to be so detrimental to our city's progress and, and moving forward for everybody. It's just, you know, and you're, and you know, and everyone talks about the 700 votes they got. You know, if I heard on the street that my rent was going to be, you know, controlled going forward, I mean, it, on paper, it sounds like it makes a lot of sense, but, you know, we're going to have to educate people on, on, on the cons of, of the, of the ordinance. And it's just a shame because, you know, we could be using these efforts in our monies for actually the people that it should be going towards and raising money for them and helping them out. I'm, I'm, I'm exhausted from this. It's been countless hours trying to, to work with this. It's really just me and Peter on here. And, you know, it's, it's, you know, at least give us a little credit. I mean, you know, it's the many against the few here. And, uh, you know, Peter and I are competitors, but you should be thanking Peter. You know, everyone says this word gentrification, like it's some taboo terrible world word, excuse me. This city was built in the heyday and like, in like the, I mean, maybe I'm wrong with this. The 50s and 60s, what do you think? These buildings last forever? What do you think? Plumbing was built with copper and electric was, was old fashioned. Peter has renovated these buildings to make them modern for people to live and work here. He's got countless bartenders, countless people living and working in there.
Hey, 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 Matthew.
I was gonna, yep.
Matthew, same as like, I, I called Peter and like, you're strained, stick to the ordinance.
All right, John. All right, Mayor. All right, I'm, I'm all set. I'm all good. Um, have a good evening, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
Calling upon Tracy Rogers. Tracy Rogers. Tracy?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Getting back to my, um, one, I want to talk about the CPI. And, um, as in the economy, I just, I just heard, we, we, we don't know where, how stable we're going to be. An economist says we're looking at increased inflation. Uh, 1980 CPI was at 13.5. And when we look at that and we clearly see that we don't know where this economy is, I think we should always plan to, 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 to go to a point where we, we have to stabilize economies. We've lost thousands of jobs and no one believes it would happen because of, of the virus. And the simple thing is when you, when you, uh, give somebody something and, and tell them that you're going to espes it off, off of perspective, that, okay, maybe 20 years it isn't. How many recessions have we had? How many situations have we gone through? And I think stabilizing the community. So when I look at these, these, these simple things, you know, 1980, you know, I, you know, I'm, 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 I was just in grammar school, but it happened. And, you know, where we've gone now, they went up and went down. Now it's pretty low, stable for years. But with this economy that we just walked out of, how can we walk into a situation where we're, we're unmanaged in that, that area? Number two, I, I still applaud that the fact that there are many people, and, and I, and I say this not to be the repetitive guy, but there are.
Hey Tracy, I'm going to cut you off for one second and we'll give you a couple of seconds. For anyone who's not, um, speaking, could you just mute your phone? Because I'm getting a lot of, uh, uh, background noise. It's Amy. So if you're, if you're, if you're not muted, please mute unless you're speaking. Sorry, Tracy.
No problem. Uh, right now, we have to look at those, those, those people in those single family and multi-dwelling units. And I have quite a few friends in all of them. I have friends in the big buildings and small buildings. And I could not see myself walking and saying, Tracy, you, you, you let this go by and we weren't protected. And it, it devastated me. And, and these are, these are the issues. And I'm not saying we, no one said that I would not sit down with anybody. But I said, we have to come up with a plan. And I'm hoping that everybody sees this. And when we go through, and I promise you, and I will fight for our ordinance, but I will sit down day one after and say, how can we fix this? And anybody that has a part, a, a property owner or anybody else, I will be there to say how we can make this better for the whole city. And we don't need this Band-Aid anymore. Let's figure out where we go and how we fix it. And, and this, my promise, and, and I, I, I can attest to anybody, yes, this is what I feel, but this right now is the time for this ordinance, our ordinance, the Affordable Housing Coalition's ordinance to, to, to supersede this council's because I don't see them being in the right place at the right time. And we, we've lost too many people and we need to stabilize and, and stop the bleeding. If not, we are going to hemorrhage to a community that we don't like. And if we want, uh, the super rich here, I, I don't think this is what Asbury Park is all about. It's, it's a collective of people in, in all different ranges of, of economic backgrounds. And I, I like rich people. I like poor people too. So I think we can have a half of medium and keep people here. And we're at a great place with some great people. Let's, let's figure out how to do it right. And, and this is the only thing, I never said that, uh, 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 we were not willing to change this when the time came. And I will be the first to support anything after a plan and a review. So I'm just asking this council. This, 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 I know you don't want to. Vote down your ordinance. Work with us and I'll be the first one at the table to sit there and see how we can come up with a better plan. And, and like I said, I, you know, we, we're up all night. We keep going through this. Like they say, the majority of the people that spoke have told you that this is, this, this plan is not the best plan for this community. And most of the people, you've had very few property owners who are rich people who sit there, who are privileged and have the opportunity of doing what they do. So let's all sit down, let's look at this comprehensively and let's make a community that we can all live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Calling upon Bill McElhenney. Bill McElhenney. Bill McElhenney, star six, unmute yourself.
Hello? Okay, thank you. Um, I, I'm, I have 23 grandchildren. I need them all here to help me uh, figure out how to stay on time, on tune with you. In any case, I can't let go. It's too interesting and too important. I'm, Mr. Mayor and council members, uh, the ordinance you proposed, I, I, one of the problems I think was the study uh, or lack thereof. I think we would have been in a better position for a start if we had had a solid, uh, you know, carefully prepared, well-prepared a series of data to look at and that deeply went into this in terms of coverage, in terms of impact of certain proposals and things of that sort. I know I'm an academic, so you can just, I mean, you can toss it out of the window, but I, I think it's always helpful to start with at least some appraisal of the facts. Secondly, uh, I would, would hope that, um, Mr. Mayor, you and, and Mr. Rogers could perhaps uh, find a way to get out of this situation that we're in. Um, I think that there is no alternative of other, for people who are concerned about the renters in this town, but to vote for this resolution. There can be modifications. I don't think anybody is hard and stuck on any one position. So that's what you ought to do. Take Mr. Rogers up on his, on his offer, but perhaps find a way that we, uh, we can resolve this, that they can feel that you're honestly going to do something for the, for most of the people in this town who are renters. And that's my suggestion. And, uh, you know, it's, it's, I, I'm, I'm sure it's not fully endorsed by the coalition, but, uh, there ought to be a way to resolve this. So you two guys find that, find that way and bring all your followers in and, uh, resolve it. It has to be something that addresses the problem. And honestly, Mr. Mayor, this proposition you proposed does not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Not seeing any other hands raised, a motion to close the meeting to the public, the public hearing.
Move to close, Quinn.
Second, Chapman.
The public hearing is now closed on ordinance 21-5.
Could I make a statement? Can I just say something? Is that, is that okay?
The appropriate time would be.
Well, let's move, let's close the public session, Eileen, and then you can make a statement.
Well, there was a motion in a second. They need to have a formal vote. So Melody, if you could just wrap that up with a vote.
Sure, absolutely. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
I think he muted.
All right. Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Star six, Jesse, if you can hear us.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
My phone is acting up. Hello?
Yes, we're, we're voting on the, to close the public hearing.
Yes, my, my phone is acting up. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the public hearing is now closed. And I would recommend that there be a motion in a second on the ordinance and you can open it up for discussion and comments from the council.
Do I have a motion?
I would move to open.
Motion to move, to adopt the ordinance is what would be the appropriate motion.
Right.
Okay.
The motion to adopt?
Yes.
Do I have a second to adopt 21-5?
Second, Quinn.
Second, Kendall.
Are there any questions or comments before we move to roll call on 21-5?
Yes, I have a comment, Eileen Chapman. Um, you know, we realize that both the petitioners and the landlords are not satisfied with our ordinance. You know, in meeting with, um, both the parties over the past few months, we realized that they were both miles apart in their philosophy and were not moving toward, um, a reconciliation. So what we needed to do was find, uh, some middle ground, a compromise, a basis by where we could then continue to review and adjust this ordinance as needed. So I'm looking forward to helping to shape this. Um, this ordinance into a document that provides meaningful protective rights to our tenants. Um, you know, this is just the beginning. And Maureen, I have to, I have to really, uh, comment on something you said about 700 signatures. There are actually 301 valid signatures on your petition. There were, I think, a little bit over 500 that were submitted and, uh, were not validated, only 301 of the signatures. I also, you know, Tracy, you said you wanted us to sit down and talk. If this ordinance passes, there's still an opportunity. This ordinance could be changed at any time. And yes, we would have liked to have a, a lengthy study done as well, but the time constraints, when this petition was, uh, given to us just before the holidays, it kind of pushed us into a smaller window, um, where a lengthier study could not be done. And, and that's all I've got to say. I hope, you know, we continue to work together on this and, and make it what we all want it to be.
Are there any other comments from council before we move to roll call?
Yeah, Moore has a couple. Uh, I, I am very proud of Asbury Park tonight because this is a very, uh, touchy subject, but everybody distinguished themselves by being very professional. Nobody went after anybody, uh, where they could have. Uh, I appreciate that and I compliment the citizens of Asbury Park. Uh, there was a couple of things. Somebody said, we shouldn't take the country CPI. We didn't take the country CPI. We took the Northeast New Jersey CPI, which includes Asbury Park. And it was funny because Tracy mentioned like, uh, 1980 was a certain percent and Moore being bored and everything. I went through from 50 to, to 1950 through, uh, 2020, which is 70-some years. And the average, and I wish I could say, yeah, this is how we came up with 3.5%. But the average was 3.56% over the past 70 years. Some as high as, uh, 11.4 and some as low as negative numbers. So, uh, that was it. And as far as somebody said, we should have a more, more open council. Well, shame on you. This is the most open council in the world. So whoever said that, I know who said it. I'm not going to embarrass them. Uh, some, somebody and Ms. McElhenney, I thank you and God, I wish I have your strength and your ability at 89 years old. You know, as far as the study, you know, we would have loved to do a study, but in the middle of a COVID, in the middle of a short timeframe, uh, where we can't do a charrette as far as we did with the boardwalk and everything like that, uh, via Zoom and two or three people could monopolize it. It just couldn't be done in such a short timeframe. Uh, again, some people said the petitioner's ordinance could be modified within three years. Well, that's exactly opposite what the petitioner said. They said it could not be modified within three years. And again, uh, and those shots are not after anybody except the one who said we should have a more open council. Uh, and I appreciate the city and all the residents for being so cordial to each other tonight. Thank you.
Any additional comments from council before we move for roll call? Not hearing any, uh, we will now move to roll call. This is the roll call for the adoption of ordinance 2021-5. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance approved. We're now on to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to move, Kendall?
Second, Chapman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.